That's it, yep. Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone and call to order tonight's working session of the Planning Board for Tuesday, October 7th. The time is six o'clock PM. I'd like to start with our roll call and attendance present this evening. Myself, Chairman Matthew O'Neil, Vice Chairman Christopher Lawler, Planning Board members Jean Gagne, Morris Devine, Alternative Member Derek Lombard. Town staff present this evening include our Administrative Officer, Town Planner Nancy Latendra, our Minutetaker Chloe Chanel, and our Assistant Solicitor for Planning and Zoning Scott Levesque. We have one set of minutes for approval this evening from September 2nd, 2025. Anyone have any questions or comments on the 2025 meeting minutes?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes from the Planning Board Working Session on September 2nd, 2025 as presented. Second, I want to make sure I was a defendant.
That's right. Before we have a vote on that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that we have a quorum of members who were present for that meeting who can vote.
That's right, you cannot vote. And that is a great point. Morris, you were absent.
So we're gonna need to table those minutes.
So we will have to table that. So you're correct, we only have three members that were present during that meeting. Thank you very much, Mr.
I withdraw my second. I withdraw my motion.
Okay, in that case, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is changes to the agenda, agenda, sorry. My Boston snuck out for a second there. We're gonna review discussion and possible action by the Planning Board on changes to the agenda, such as known continuances and the order in which items will be heard. Are there any recommendations or changes to the agenda this evening from any members of the board?
Yeah, possibly. Do we have, do we have members of the public here for this 11 Quarry Road? Yes, we do. Okay, I make a motion that we move F1 to in front of Old Business, a Route 1 corridor review. That's my motion.
I second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Any discussion from members of the board? Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. So our agenda this evening will go F1 and then E1. So with that said, first order of business will be F1, 2025, ATC-01 Advisory to the Town Council, zoning map amendment, 11 Quarry Road, assessor's map 45 lot 5. This is a review discussion and possible action by the Planning Board on the request for a zoning map amendment, to rezone a parcel from MDR 30 to RR 60 for future farming and residential development. Sergio, we shocked you so much you weren't ready with your easel yet. I apologize.
Mr. Chair, you all set?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. For the record, Sergio Trenzia with Trenzia and Associates.
Yeah, I can grab it.
Hello?
There we go.
Okay. Once again, Sergio Trenzia with Trenzia and Associates, offices at 99 Mechanic Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut. I'm here this evening with Kale Calder, who is the applicant for this zoning map amendment. Kale is here to answer any questions that I may not be able to. I've been working with Kale for probably the last few years on this property. His work takes him all around the country as he does a beekeeping for a lot of different properties that range all the way out to Iowa and California. He's on the road a lot managing, you know, beehives all around the country. And he's brought his talents and his expertise into Westerly. And he's purchased this property with hopes to, well, put the APIRE and use it for other farming uses potentially in the future, but that's his main business and to, you know, have a place for his home, for his place of residence as well. So the property is located at 9-11 Quarry Road. I'll give you the other map first to kind of orient you here. And this is the radius map that we're required to file with the zoning men in the application. And you can see the subject property here right off of Quarry Road, which comes off of Church Street. I believe there's a, there's an approved solar facility down also on Quarry Road. Much of the surrounding properties are residential in nature. And then it leads up to the quarry, I believe the Kamoli Quarry Pen at the end of Church Street. So this property, as you can see, it's got wetlands on, it's kind of flanked on both the east side and the west side. So it will be subject to Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management wetlands approval when we get to that step. We have conducted some soil testing on the site and we've determined that that the site will be suitable for a septic system on some of the upper areas where the residents will be likely situated in the future. There's no proposal for that now, but my client would like to, you know, start using the property and put some buildings up for for the use, for the farm use. And currently under the MDR 30 zoning, that is farm or agricultural uses are not allowed. There, that was the impetus for this zone change. We consulted with the zoning official and the planner and they did endorse and recommend that this would be the best path to go to keep it residentially zoned into the RR 60, which is also what it is owned across Quarry Road. This zone would bleed now into across Quarry Road and into this property. It would still be surrounded by the MDR 30 uses. So slightly larger zoning requirements for the RR 60, but also allows for that agricultural use, which is like I said, the really the reason why we're here with you this evening. We're not looking to make any financial gain or to split the lot into anything. It's just, it's gonna be, you know, situated just as it is. We wouldn't zone it to a higher zoning area if that was the case. And you can see it's pretty well restricted by the wetlands. We have to, we obtained a, through some some coordination with the neighbors, the plats on these, on this road were a little ambiguous and we worked with the neighbors to make sure that Kale had a valid access just to the north of these wetlands so that he could gain access to the property, which he currently does have. And, you know, is able to access the upland on the property for future development. I believe in your staff report, there's a little bit of history of the lot. There's this large concrete pad and it was used prior for, I believe, chicken farming, chicken coops. So it does have a history of farm use. And it's actually a nice spot where I believe Kale plans to, you know, use for his APIRE use. Kale's also been working with the Westley Land Trust pretty closely in doing some of their beekeeping, correct, at their property and helping out there. And there's a letter to file that Ms. Fusco put in, the Director of the Westley Land Trust, that endorses there, at least the land trust, saying that this is a, that they're endorsed the zoning amendment so that Kale can utilize the site for the agricultural and APIRE use. Kale's here to answer any questions that I might have missed. I'm sure you want to hear from your planner, but that's the general gist of what we're requesting this evening for a positive advisory opinion to the to the Town Council for this zone change.
Thank you, Sergio. Nancy, do you have some comments you want to make?
I just want to say that I believe this is a very straightforward and easy, a no-brainer here. It was, we are looking to maintain lots for agricultural purposes and that is in the comprehensive plan. Mr. Chairman, what I wanted to do was I wanted to let everyone know what the process is for the zone change since we're gonna be talking a lot about them this evening. So just very brief, may I do that very briefly?
Absolutely.
Okay, so the legal process for a zone change is that the Planning Board makes a recommendation to the Town Council. And while doing that recommendation, there are a couple of determinations that need to be made and these are reflected in the motion that has been drafted for you. One is consistency with the comprehensive plan and the second one is consistency with the purposes of zoning. And those are also this support, supporting factors that the Town Council is supposed to take into consideration. The, when it comes to a zone change, the Planning Board does not make a decision on the zoning, just like a zoning text amendment that is reserved for the council. But according to Rhode Island general laws, the advisory has to come through the Planning Board. So there has been a, there will be advertised, this will be advertised for a public hearing. The date has already been set. Because of its kind of straightforward nature, this is being presented to you tonight and you're being asked for a decision tonight. And would appreciate your understanding when it comes to that. If you have any questions about the process or anything, please let me know. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from members of the board?
Sure, Mr. Trenzia. So the next property over, that's the Land Trust property? And then if you were to continue down Quarry Road, you ultimately would get to the Crandall Farm?
Which property are you referring to?
The one below.
The one to the south?
Yeah, this one off to the right on Quarry Road. Is that the Land Trust property?
No, the Land Trust doesn't, I don't believe they own any property.
They don't own this property in there?
No, they just worked with Kale at their property at Barlow and they put a letter of endorsement just based on kind of a character reference.
This ultimately goes over to Dunn's Corners, but it's, it's right, that old Quarry Road, doesn't it connect all the way over through the Crandall Farm?
I'm not sure.
It's all abandoned, okay.
Yeah, Kale, you can come up.
She has to speak into the microphone. Just giving you the record. Yeah, I'm Kale Calder, the owner putting in for this. If Quarry Road went through and the quarry wasn't in the way and that kind of thing, yeah, it would come out down to Dunn's Quarter area similar to
Right.
I can't think of the, the street just to the side of it. But the same thing, if the quarry had not been in the way, yeah, that would come out the other side.
Would have come out on the other side, okay, great.
And if you look at some old maps and stuff, there is actually where it says that down through their tracings of it, you know, it's kind of drawn like a wagon trail type thing, so.
When, so it's gonna go back to being a farm. First of all, I think this is great, you know, because we are, I previously served on the Southern Rhode Island Conservation Commission as a.
I worked with them as well.
So I'm aware of the threat that happens to farmland in South County Rhode Island, so this is a great thing. What type of farm are you gonna put in here? Are you gonna grow vegetables? Are you gonna grow vegetables, some animals?
No, I'm not gonna do any livestock, you know, it's not in the plans, I mean, other than bees, obviously.
Yeah.
What I've got, it used to be farmed and as Sergio had mentioned, it used to be, they had a commercial chicken operation there. That burned down, they quit farming a bunch of the plots they had. So I plan on clearing some of that out because I've got a lot of just scrub maple and that kind of stuff that's come up in the, you know, the 40 years since then.
Yep.
As well as I've got a lot of mature oak trees that have gotten the blight from several years ago that need to be cleared out and that type of thing. That's what I'm working with the Conservation District about with their Forest Service plan on that. Some of the areas that used to be farmed crop-wise, I'd like to turn into more golden round wildflowers, that type of thing. And through some of the wooded areas, I mean, we planted asters this fall. I've got other stuff coming to still put in.
So you're gonna have a forest management plan and?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, basically my whole thing is I want to grow, be able to grow enough food for myself, maybe a little extra and a place for my bees where they can not only forage there, where I've got to add up with sunlight and that type of thing.
Wonderful. All right, great, thank you.
As well as, it actually comes into some erosion control too, just the way Quarry Road sits on a big chunk of rock and the water comes off other places, so.
Good.
That's the one wetland.
No, I think it's a great idea. Don't have any questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Mars? I have a just quick question. Earlier, perhaps it was my misunderstanding, but is there a provision for the eventuality of potential residential development here?
Yes, Kale plans to put a single-family residence here for his home, for his home.
But not subdivided in any other way beyond?
Oh, no.
There's no offense.
That's, that's not been my plan at all. I've been trying to do this whole thing. Really, the reason I'm looking to change this is because I need a larger shop than I need house. And currently under the MDR, I can't do that. I mean, it's just the wife, myself and dog and, you know. And that's really what it all comes down to, but since the state did make me farm, it would be nice to be able to make some improvements I spoke of as well. You know, just leave it better than I found it, basically.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Growing up, I spent a lot of time at my uncle's farm at 14, right across the street. So I'm familiar with the area, just trying to envision how any of this kind of stuff would actually work, but thank you.
And ultimately, we're just connecting two areas that are already farmland on either side of the road as it stands right now, correct? The other side of yours is already.
The way it's zoned.
The way it's zoned right now, it's already, yeah, not actually farmland, but already it's RR 60 on one side and RR 60 on the other side, correct?
There's RR 60 on the east side of Quarry Road. The west side of Quarry Road is majority, I believe, is MDR 30.
MDR 30, but on the west side of your property, I believe, the back up behind it, so you're just extending that all the way to the road. Your property connects that zone to the road.
Yeah, it'll become.
Bridges the two.
It'll be a belt, yeah, that comes through there, you're right.
Okay, all right. I don't have any other questions. Are there any other questions from members of the board?
No, I'd like to make a motion.
What was yours?
Within our document administrative memo concerning this property map 45 lot 5, on page, beginning on page 3, we have a draft motion. So advisory to the Town Council on the zoning amendment. The Wesley Town, Wesley Planning Board hereby recommends approval of the proposed zoning map amendment to rezone 11 Quarry Road from medium-density residential 30, MDR-30, to rural residential 60 or RR-60 in accordance with the applicant's application 2025-ATC-01, zoning map amendment, 11 Quarry Road, assessor's map 5 lot, assessor's map 45, lot 5, along with the application supporting materials included in the site, plan titled Cedar Calder Residence, 11 Quarry Road, map 45 lot 5, Wesley Rhode Island dated September 4th, 2025, last revised in September 24th, 2025 and prepared by Trenzia and Associates LTD. The finding of facts, the zone change is consistent with the 2020-2040 Town of Wesley Comprehensive Community Plan, particularly the following actions which seeks to expand and preserve local agriculture. Action item NAT-1-2A, promote and encourage utilization of voluntary conservation methods for conserving farmlands and forested areas zoned for residential use. And B, action item NRG-2.1C, pursue local agricultural production and food availability to reduce the community's energy consumption. The adoption of the zoning change conforms with the general purposes set forth in 260-5, promoting the public health, safety and general welfare and also providing a wide, for a range of uses and intensities of uses appropriate to the character of Wesley and reflecting the current and expected future needs. And C, providing for orderly growth and development, which recognizes the goals and patterns of land use contained in the comprehensive plan, the natural characteristics of the land and the values of unique or valuable natural resources and features. And providing for the protection of the natural, historic, cultural and scenic character of Wesley or specific areas therein. And finally, providing for the preservation and promotion of agricultural production bars, silver cut, silviculture, aquaculture, timber resources and open space. That is my motion. Second.
All right, we have a motion that's seconded. Any discussion? I'd just like to hear John read that again in its entirety if we could.
Thanks.
Very nicely done. If no one else wants to hear that, I guess we could call this to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries five to zero. Gentlemen, thank you very much this evening.
Thank you for your time.
Gentlemen, I'll have the decision into Matt tomorrow and I will send it to you and I will also, also send it upstairs to Mary.
Okay, next order of business this evening is item E1. This is the Route 1 Corridor Working Session, Comprehensive Plan Amendments. This is a review, discussion and possible action by the Planning Board on the Route 1 Corridor, including but not limited to comprehensive plan text amendments, recommendations on design standards and discussion of the zoning ordinance revisions. So this is our capstone, you might say? The culmination of everything we spent all summer going through? All pulled together in one nice neat little package to walk through tonight? We're pretty close to.
So I am.
Spill your coffee. I don't want someone to jump out of his seat in excitement and spill his coffee, that's all.
Yeah, good.
Oh, no, your coffee. I want you to jump out of your seat in excitement and spill your coffee, that's all.
So it's all I need tonight, so I'm trying to work, compute the slide presentation that we put together just to illustrate some of the items that we need to go over. Now, before it gets started, I have been asked to prepare a a schedule to get this through to the Town Council. And I believe at the beginning of all our work sessions, there was discussion about at the end having a joint meeting with the EDC and the ARB again. That because of issues last week with other things going on, we were supposed to do that this evening, but we have moved that to November 4th. Town Hall is open November 4th, even though there's supposed to be some kind of election going on or whatever, voting on something. So in any case, that would, I'm proposing to use as the Planning Board's public hearing on the comprehensive plan changes. At the same time that we're gonna be having a public hearing on the comprehensive plan changes, and that's all of this, so in other words, we invite the public, we're gonna have all the members of the EDC and the ARB here. It's gonna be advertised as a public hearing so people can come comment on it. At the same time we're doing that, you're going to be making a recommendation to the Town Council on making the zone changes necessary to implement the comprehensive plan changes. So in other words, those specific things I'm gonna go over with you this evening, okay? As we go through this one more time. The actual text changes, which we're gonna discuss some of those too, those are gonna happen shortly thereafter. So the whole concept is that the zone change designation and the comprehensive plan amendment will get to the Town Council at the same time. And then shortly thereafter, with all the other zoning, zoning ordinance amendments that we've been anticipating, the ones associated with the Route 1 Corridor will be in place too. And if the council takes that information and moves it through the process, we could be done with this before May, before the summer, okay? And it is, I am obligated to get it through the Planning Board and see to it that all the advertising is done correctly at the Planning Board level. And Mr. Levack and I have discussed that just today. And so it will be advertised in the newspaper for your public hearing on November 4th, starting next week. It's gotta be in the newspaper three, three weeks in a row. Okay, any questions about that? Okay, I appreciate that very much. Let's see.
One quick question, is there anyone who's not gonna be here? One question, is there anyone who's not going to be here on November fourth? Probably should ask that question now.
I will not be here. I'll be testi- I'll be testifying at trial.
Ah.
Oh, my goodness, alright, well.
No, not my goodness, the other poor guys.
Alright, well, at least that four.
Okay, well, eh, hopefully the other.
Yeah, whoever the other three, yes.
The other three, yes, um very good. Um and I'm available for anyone if you want to review this, this, okay? So I'm first, I'd like to go through the document that's been posted on the agenda and then I cast out to to few folks this evening and that you had, hopefully had a chance to see over the weekend. And now you have a paper copy in front of you. And it's called zoning ordinance provisions. And again, this is this version, this format is just proposed for discussion. I know it's a lot of reading, but so take your time reading it between now and the four, November fourth, okay? We're not adopting these changes, but this is to me, it took me a while to figure out the best way to present this information to you all into the town council and so that um we could get through it. So I am going to kind of walk you through some of this, these pages here. And um I'm gonna call your attention to a few things up there and then today I just realized that I already had some other um maps already done um that had kind of been in in my computer for about three years, Elise did help me with these before she left. Um and so I'm going to use them to kind of illustrate some of the discussion today as well, so. I'll either refer to this or refer to the computer, okay?
We're going through this?
We will get to that at the end, okay?
Okay.
But that, yeah, let's let's do this part first so that we understand what we're looking at.
Sure.
One question on this before we get going, just for, one, my own edification and clarity and also two, for the benefit of other people that may be watching or present, what is the source for all of this language and definitions?
What is the source of of the language in this?
Yeah.
I wrote all this.
Oh, well, yes, and most of this is the stuff, same stuff that we went through um on the slides during the working session. Understood.
Yes.
That wasn't the question. The question was where did all that language come from? Was it dreamed up in somebody's office or was there a template that was referenced and adopted for the town of Wesley?
No, this is not a, this is all, this is all our staff work, myself and Diego, okay? Um and it's, some of it's been run through the um the town, the zoning official, particularly things about height setbacks and stuff like that, we sat around a table, we said, well, if we adjust this a little bit, what what do we get, that kind of thing? Um but in term, that's why I said this is not in the format in which it's going to get adopted. It's, this is, I did this so you could easily read it, okay? So let's dig into it for a little bit. I'm starting on page two, okay? There are certain corridor provisions, they're going to apply to the entire corridor, right? Uh for example, and this is your first, the first paper image that I passed out today. This one in all blue illustrates the boundaries of the the corridor in the dark blue kind of pen. And then the other uh lines you see here are the bed and breakfast overlay district. Okay, one of the thing, one of the zone changes that we're going to be doing as part of this process is we're going to remove the bed and breakfast overlay district from any property that is on but within within the uh Route One Corridor overlay. So those are all properties that that front on Route One, okay? And and but they will remain everywhere else in that it is, it's it's a very big district, it's like all over the place. The only benefit to the roof, to the bed and breakfast overlay district is that there is very specific guidance on what a bed and breakfast or a bed and breakfast in um should, needs to provide if one is going to go on the corridor here, uh uh anywhere in the district.
But should, just a question.
Please.
Okay, so let's say we have our vision of what the corridor should be. And then someone comes along and says, I've got a piece of property that's in the corridor and I want to put it in a bed and breakfast.
They will be able to.
Okay, I'm, okay.
We will have.
If we're saying, if we're saying that, I I think, so my concern raises when we talk about, I create rules and I'm saying, an outside investor wants to come in and use a piece of property and I look toward the Havisham area.
Yep.
So the Havisham area would seem to be a logical area where someone might say one day, hey, I'd like to put in a bed and breakfast in that area on a lot along Route One. And we're saying absolutely not, you can't.
No, you're not saying that.
Well, I'm just saying, but why wouldn't we say you can't? Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we say if someone wants to invest in our community and a bed and breakfast isn't a horrible thing, why would we not allow them to do it?
Okay.
All in here, I understand the various overlays kind of get confusing. But within the Route One Corridor, if someone wanted to come in and make that sort of capital investment.
Okay.
We'll let them do it.
The answer to that question is that it's, it's, it's bad planning practice to use an overlay district just to allow a single use in a large area.
Exactly, I agree with that, I agree with that.
So what, what the ov- that overlay district is going to provide after we have Route One Corridor is redundancy, just simple redundancy.
I'm not, you're 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 getting me wrong here. I'm not speaking of fever of keeping an overlay district. I'm saying at the end of the day, what the over dis- overlay district allowed is someone to make an investment in our community.
Yes.
And and under the new scenario where the overlay is gone, but the Route One Corridor remains, will they be able to put a bed and breakfast in there anywhere they want?
Yes.
Perfect, that's it, that's all I was concerned about.
Yeah, most definitely, yep.
Yep, yeah, some changes, that was one of the things I think we weighed at the beginning, that that had to remain. It's just the boundaries changed. Yeah, nope.
And and for everyone's information, the bed and breakfast overlay district is is very lengthy, it's very complex, okay? I am not taking out, I'm not suggesting taking out the entire bed and breakfast overlay. Wha- all I'm doing is taking Route One out of the bed and breakfast overlay to speak, so that um it would, there's no redundancy, okay? Alright. Thank you. The next uh overlay district I want to bring your attention to, and again, this is in the general the category of corridor wide provisions and this is, um this is the actually, no, that's the next quarter, okay? The other corridor wi- wide uh provisions, again on page two, has to do with signage. Now, these ideas with respect to changes in signage and more specifics regarding signage, um I have written in the context of the signage ordinance. Okay, they will be added to the signage ordinance where they fit in. What, the, and that is section two sixty eighty-six, which is appended to this document at the back, okay? It's a very long ordinance, a section of the ordinance as well. There's a number of things in there that we're going to be changing, some of which are going to be specific to um to uh the Route One Corridor or highway commercial in particular, okay? Um and if you thumb through that document, you'll see I've highlighted the section uh that is specific to certain commercial activities. I will, will tell you it's line two ninety-one, okay? Uh certain uh commercial districts, sorry. The you'll see the HC District Highway Commercial and the General Commercial there, those are the only two that uh you will find in the Route One Corridor, okay? We're going to do some, some um specific changes to probably that section um in order to just bring, bring the up to date, okay? And to, and also to implement some of the design stuff that we talked about with them, so.
And that would include some of the stuff that we talked about where the address locations, the stuff that's more brought up about.
I'm going to show you some in a minute, we'll be, we'll walk through just a couple of examples. But I want to tell you that there is some things here about does some design of signs that will become kind of routine all up and down Route One. Okay, that's what this is for right now, question?
Yes, good question for you on line one nineteen through line one twenty-one inclusive where it talks about vehicular signs.
One, I'm sorry, one nineteen? Yep.
On page, I guess, two hundred dash six. Um what about the uh inclusion of language that prevents someone from just parking a vehicle, say maybe a truck or a van with a business name on it in an area where clearly business is not being engaged?
Sure, that's already in the sign ordinance, uh so if you look um line, let's see, it's got to be somewhere prohibited signs, um it's somewhere in there, I just read it earlier today, okay? So the sign ordinance begins.
Right, so on line two twenty, it says vehicular signs.
Yeah.
But if I.
Is that where you are?
If I go back to line one one nine, that use isn't addressed.
No, it wouldn't be because it's already prohibited. So this is what happens is you.
Later on, yeah. One one nine is the definition.
Yeah.
But in one one nine, it says a stationary advertiser for the business on which the vehicle sits or is otherwise not incidental to the vehicle's primary purpose. So if the advertising for the business is in fact painted without work and decals on the side of said vehicle, that is for the vehicle's said purpose, but if it's parked in a place strategically where it's clearly advertising, but there's no related work from that company going on, that is a sign.
Right.
Okay.
So there's no provision here to prevent that.
Okay, well, um I'll take a closer look at that. But what, please understand that the sign ordinance is going to, if you're looking for about signs somewhere on the Route One Corridor, the the first go to the sign order.
It's under line two twenty.
Mm-hmm.
I see that.
Yeah, that applies first.
Signs, the following signs are permitted in all zoning districts unless otherwise permitted.
Vehicular signs.
But then on the other hand, really doesn't talk about that particular circumstance as being recognized as a vehicular sign.
I guess. So, right.
Okay, so it's really important to me that, that since we, we have members of the public here who, that um that they understand what I'm talking about um as well, okay? So when it comes to an overlay district, the first thing you got to understand is the zoning ordinance still applies when it comes to parking and and signage, and we're going to make a few tweaks to that, but that's about it. Then you have the underlying zoning, okay? Highway commercial, HDR six, et cetera, okay? And that will still remain, and if there's going to be any change in what goes on in those zones, it's going to be specifically called out in the new section that says Route One Corridor overlay, okay? So in some cases, it says, you go with the underlying zoning, everything's there. And in other cases, it might add a couple of things, it might subtract a couple of things, okay? It's as simple as that. Okay, so the general stuff in about the signs uh or within the sub-quarters and stuff is kind of layered on top of all those others, okay? And believe me, we have a whole department that, oh, we get out there, we we regulate signs a lot, so we are enforcement officers constantly pulling signs and I just get after them to to take them down to the transfer station and recycle them because they're always in the backseat of our car and anyway. Better, better.
I know it's not my.
Still another question.
I know it's a, it's.
Isn't.
The five, sir, if you could, just please identify yourself with the people at home.
Dylan Lupitra, fifty-one clock street. I noticed when you guys split the, what's the way we use transects, the five different divisions that we want quota study? So the sign ordinance will be different for each one of these transects, are you going to have one?
There's going to be one sign order.
Ordinance for the all five transactions will be treated the same.
Hold on, let me answer. One for the entire thing that gives us um general scale and 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 also um kind of some consistency. But you'll see that, and I've got some images, that as you go through the corridor, the signs generally get bigger, okay? So when you get all the way out to Walmart, those are going to be your bigger signs. Over here at the top of Granite Street, those are going to be your smaller ones, and it's just a subtle change.
If if you could, think of it as a, it's a, it's a visual versus speed. As you're up on Granite Street, you're driving slower. Um so your signs are smaller because your ability to be able to read signs from a moving car, you can read a smaller sign, so your signs are smaller, they don't have to be as visually big. As you move down by the airport and the speed of the road increases, your signs get bigger and it's the same effect you see from a highway sign versus a road sign on the street. Highway signs are bigger because you're moving at a higher rate of speed. They have to be bigger for you to visually be able to see them while you're driving at a higher rate of speed than a standard road sign, so it's that scale because of the speed you're driving at, that allows you to be able to see them from a dis- further distance so that you're not up too close to them at a high speed and trying to look over while you're driving.
It's generally going to be all the same with just s- specific tweaks here and there based on the actual characteristics and what we need the signage to do for us.
But no more, no more billboards.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's only one, what did we find, it was like five or six billboards or something? We talked about this at one of the meetings.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
There, well, there's only one legal one in.
On Route One, yeah, but there's a few of them in town, I think we counted like five of them.
Yeah, those are legal non-conforming, yeah. Um, okay, so besides signs, have there being like a standard group of stuff for signs? Site design, there'll be standards as well, standardized, and building design. For building design, we've, we've um picked up the term New England Coastal Architectural Style. Um and I know right now that there is um a suggestion that there being absolutely no bright colors on Route One, but I think, I think we need to know, we need to know that, you know, businesses like um O'Reilly's is, they're going to want to bring their own uh kind of brand in to one, so.
No, I think, I think we talked about that, that we, we said we recommend neutral colors, but we wouldn't preclude businesses' colors, right, because and that what we all agreed to, we weren't gonna preclude branding of particular interests.
Exactly.
Could I, could I ask Mr. Chairman, could we invite the the Chair of the?
Oh, yeah.
ARB.
That's why we have a microphone.
Because this next portion, I've got a question for you specifically.
Take that seat.
So.
Paul, you can go sit over there by that mic.
So here, here's, here's where I'm going, Paul. So I hear traditional shoreline or or traditional New England, and I think salt box and I think Cape Cod's and I think, so here's my, when we talk about designs from an ARB perspective and and from a planning board perspective, we don't want to see salt box after salt box after salt box. W- there's, is there going to be a mix here? How do you see this working so that we can get within a design style but still have thing? Because if we have the same design over and over and over again, it ultimately becomes, it becomes stale looking, right? It becomes, it becomes sterile, so help me out.
There's probably the easiest answer I can give you, there's no one paragraph that's going to define what we want to see.
Yeah, yeah.
It's going to be different, it's uh the scale's important, the use is important, certainly having color pa- palettes is important. So eh to me, what is New England style? It's different in rural areas than it is on the Route One Corridor, so that's pretty vague.
But you're bringing, but you're bringing rural in, aren't you? Are you bringing Victorian in, are you bringing, like if you look around town, we have eclectic, we have, we have the Queen Anne Victorians, we have the Federals, we have the salt boxes, we have the.
Mid-century modern.
You know, how do you see that? I- if we, if we, if, do we intend Route One to reflect westerly? The greater westerly, uh and and and.
I, I think the verbiage that's on there is going to be difficult to control, even though. I I think the verbiage that's on there is going to be difficult to control even though it's indicated. Your opinion of New England architecture may be different from mine. You, are you, are you discarding more glass because that's core of the modern mindset? I I, that's just gonna have to, i- it's difficult to define.
Paul, Paul, can I give you the layperson's thing I took away from it from Diego's presentation? Cause, cause I I I don't understand architecture at all, I always look at architecture and art and I'm, I'm an engineer, I get very confused if things aren't square. So, you know, big boxes to me look normal, so I I'm the worst person at all to do this, so. The way Diego explained it and the way, what I took away from it is um it should have features on it that make it look, you know, somewhat unique and cool, but not overly um odd or displeasing to the eye. In other words, the roof should have, you know, angular features, the the columns out in front. The overhangs from the 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 walkways in front of it. Features that add to it, that give it some kind of character to the building without necessarily taking away from the overall structure.
Intentionally designed.
There you go.
And not just drop a block in the middle of something.
So not like I designed it, like somebody who had some artistic flair to design it.
I think, I think there's a lot of work that has to happen between the ARB and and the and the planning board along these lines, and I think we think need to think long in planning. I think we need to think, as we implement these things, I think we have to hard, that's how, but it's like if I ask you to describe a cute animal, okay, you know, it all depends on who's looking at the animal, so. You know.
Exactly.
Other than puppies and kittens, we're at a loss, right? Maybe a bunny.
It, this, this is um certainly difficult. What you need is some good examples to start setting, setting the motion. Because all the elements that you talked about, we don't expect that to be thrown onto a building without any meaning.
No, I I think we kept coming back to, do you want to look at the large scale? Was the, you know, the Aldi's TJ Maxx Plaza had a lot of those elements in it already. It had the the columns out front, the overhangs, the angular roof features. That we were talking about, the smaller scale one was um, I already forgot now. We looked at a smaller scale one that had the similar style features. Um and then we looked at the ones that didn't, where we were like, okay, that's a big box, like we probably don't want any more of those.
Yeah, e- even Granite Plaza, I mean, the that very large building with all the condominiums above. I mean, again, that fits in the coastal New England character.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not shingles, you know what I mean? So it's, we're not talking about the the little boxes, where each one is gonna have its own purpose. Form follows function, and then you kind of just intentionally design the exterior of the building, so it, there isn't. Yeah, so it's just, so it's not a nice word, basically, that's all we're trying to do.
Yeah, Aldi's not Walmart, Aldi's Plaza not Walmart, Walmart's a big box in the middle of the parking lot.
Yeah.
I guess, I'm sorry, I guesstimate, yeah, I I say this almost every day, form follows function. But it's gotta look good.
Yeah.
People just don't understand, you know.
It doesn't intentionally look good.
I I would hope as this thing gets really refined, cause eh eh is that we set a bunch of criteria in each sector that not only handles the buildings and signage, but what we would expect for more pedestrian or more bike paths or uh parking areas become different quagmires of uses, uh that's gonna start controlling how density is gonna work out, all right? So if you have the backdrop of the, for instance, um uh the the plaza where where um all these is, that's, you got the backdrop, and eventually that's probably gonna be split up into smaller units, but then as the other underutilized parking areas, those can be clumps of something else on a smaller scale to help bring in different interests, and then the building in the backdrop is is gonna be all interrelated, you're gonna have some continuity with with um I didn't want to get into specifics, but lanterns and and signage, all that stuff is going to marry it all together. And then I think he'll give uh the design professionals more latitude to change up and to keep that scale uh the variety that you want. So when you say New England, it's ma- eh eh, I I don't know what a uh big box New England store looks like. You have these bigger people that come in and they have different color schemes and but um think of those as the backdrop and whatever you can do in front of these log arb, I think that's. And as you interconnect, say on transect one, where you were trying it way back when to interconnect the back of the parking areas and I I, it's all gotta work together. It's not specific to buildings, it um and but you do need a couple really good examples.
As as time goes on, do you see us having a portfolio that we can show, the planning department can show and say, these are the styles? The these are, these are projects we think are very successful, or they were were well received versus others. They have a friend, so you might know him, Cam Boitz, he has a sign company.
Yeah.
Uh carve signs, and people are going, well, I want a sign, well, what kind of sign do you want? So he has portfolio, opens a portfolio, and they say, oh, wow, how much is that, you know? So eh, you know, it's all nebulous, you know, we're speaking here, but if we have portfolios of projects we like, collectively like, okay, um and the town, and is well received in town, then hey, these are the kind of projects that, which are well received.
Which is, I think, what Diego put together for us in that, which is almost like a lookbook. When a contractor comes in and says, well, what do you want, he sits down with the staff, they can be like, well, this is what we like.
Now, that was our first assignment with the ARB is to come up with cities and towns that we were familiar with or um that we thought were good examples to culminate all those examples and so that's why I think as one through five gets refined, I think you're gonna want to draw out what's best for those areas.
Yeah.
And bring out the best in the trans of what it offers.
Right, we can put everything we want in English, right, in a paragraph, but
Yeah.
if you give them four, five, six half dozen or dozen pictures and say, this is what we think.
Right.
Is in keeping with that paragraph.
Yeah.
And is well received by our ARB, by our planning board, so let's face it. If someone comes into town and they want to make an investment, they want to know the easiest process to go through. So if you can show them, hey, these are some of the good ideas, move on from there.
So thanks to us having Diego with us, we we kind of now have all have a library of photographs and images and stuff that we like, you've seen a lot of them. Um there's, 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 there's more available, uh we'll be tweaking things as we go along. Um the only thing that's getting included in the comprehensive plan is the maps and uh particularly of each of the sub quarters, so there's not gonna be any of that information in there. Um but we will have that information available, and we already have people asking us, well, what are you looking for? So it's good, it's all good.
But if we ha- but if we have that one we're explaining, and when the town council's hearing, hey, this is what the comprehensive plan looks like, oh, and and here's some of the work materials, even though they're not passing that as part of it. But again, pictures are worth a thousand words, and it expresses to the community some level of I mean, let's face it, we spent a lot of time on this, but the average.
When we put this together, presented to the town council, I I think it's easy enough to have a couple of those photos in the corner of the slide when we do it. And I don't even, you don't even have to point to them. We can be talking about the text and they're in the back, so.
Yeah, we, we, what we were thinking of doing is um making printouts and and putting them around the room. Uh various things, let people come in, walk around and and take a look and uh.
Kind of like we did for our first.
Yeah.
Walkthrough.
Exactly, exactly.
So if, if, if it's a form-based code type of approach, every five district should be treated as such, and you would probably say what we would recommend is um eh eh more of uh I'm just um a more of a designer retail or more of um um more hu- housing instead of mixed use or um the varieties. Get them to where you think they belong.
And that's what this document does.
And the pitches will fall into play.
Interrupting, I'll continue.
All right, Mort, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think we need to do, and it's reasonable and prudent, certainly looking at through through the eyes of a developer or that kind of end of the operation, where I want to invest, I want to come in, and, you know, we're talking now, there's a lot of subjectivity, there's a lot of ether, there's a lot of vapor. And I think someone mentioned it over here earlier, it might have been you, uh Mr. Chairman, that it all depends on who looks at it, and we need to reduce that chance of subjectivity, become more objective, definitive pictures. Uh some word descriptions and at that point, or tell the developer or whatever, or you propose something that would be a similar fit, as opposed to coming before whoever and saying, well, this is kind of what we think you mean by this, and they have to come back two, three, four times before everybody.
And I think that's.
That's no way to run a railroad.
No, I I think that's fine, and I I do want to just caution one thing is that as as much as I'd love to be able to say, build it this way, we do want to give them a little bit of latitude here because they want to build their buildings.
That's, that's what I was saying.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying, but give them something, a little bit more than just, it should be, you know, whatever, and then their interpretation is different than his, than her, than whoever's, and it just becomes you know, too, too many bites at the apple before everybody is, gets to be happy.
Yeah, and that's why I think, you know, that coming in, looking at the things to see what it is that is consistent with the town, having that available for the contractors.
Yes. Um, and so the, like, just like you were suggesting, we can uh hone in on some things based on the sub corridor, um they, I've just covered like the general stuff.
Right.
And we can kind of see now, uh I'm gonna walk through the five sub quarters with you. Um hopefully quickly, maybe in a half hour, um and point out some of the the key, the the key changes. Here's the list, though, um on the, what's called the agenda. Um sub corridor one, two, and five are, we're going to discuss existing zoning and some zone changes, uh changes to the underlying zone. Okay, uh three and four, there is no zone changes that I'm recommending, okay? So that's, we'll get, we'll get to those. Then, uh one, two, and four, those are the ones that are commercial or mixed use with commercial and not just purely residential. Um we'll talk about signage and building development. Uh three and, three and five, which is what we call the neighborhood edge. The, the information there is going to focus on right-of-way improvements. We're not telling people how to, how, how, what to put in their yards, their front yards, okay? So it's just gonna be right, right-of-way improvements, and yes, that's going to have to happen in conjunction with Rhode Island DOT. It's gonna take a while, it's kind of the mid to long-term process. Um but it's, I think you're gonna find it kind of invigorating, and since we've been working so much on Main Street, um I think this is gonna catch on, it's gonna be really, really wonderful. Um and then we're gonna throw signage in, in in each, in each quarter, okay? Just brief discussions. So the first thing I would like to bring your attention to, and now I'm on page three, is the granite, this this document, the Granite Street Overlay District, attached to it, you have the Granite Street Overlay District is, is all of the crosshatched areas, and you'll see what the underlying zoning is. So now this one here, you can really see how the overlay is on top of the underlying zoning, so everything you see here, P fifteen, P fifteen allows residential development, um allows someone to change a single family to a duplex, but also allows for professional offices and services to come out of those homes. HGR six is just single family, duplexes, triplexes, and in one case uh multifamily development apartment style, I think it's called the Roger Williams Inn, something like that. Um and you'll see that up and down uh Granite Street. Now, the Grand Street Overlay does end at the the restaurant on the corner, right, was that the the sandwich place? Um and at the high school currently. My proposal is to remove the Granite Street Overlay District in its entirety. Um if you would want to read what the Granite Street Overlay District is about, I gave you that page, it's the small, okay? It basically um was trying to kind of bring artist studios and professional offices into that area between the downtown and the uh Tower Street. Okay, that was the purpose, and the only, the, it's basically the HGR six zoning district is what is applied to eh to everything in the district in terms of the um development standards and setbacks and stuff like that. Um and the only other two things that are being allowed, once again, in this case is general and professional offices and artistic and photo studios, okay? The other page is my little uh notes to myself um about, you know, okay, what does this really mean? If we take off the Granite Street Overlay District, what do we lose? Well, once again, we lose a lot of redundancy, okay? Um as for the one lot that zoned a restaurant, the 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 um sandwich place, eh, none of this will affect it if we take it off, it's gonna remain, it's gonna remain uh zoned highway commercial, it's gonna remain a restaurant. So it wasn't benefiting anything. The high school, that's not gonna have any effect on the high school either. The lots that are HGR six, some of those lots, um they they're all single family, dub duplexes, et cetera. Um and it really is a very good um developed neighborhood uh of residential development, and and I don't foresee uh in the future that it um it going to anything other than, however, if someone wanted to do a home uh home occupation or have a business at home, that would be, that could happen in that area, okay? Um. But it's also an area, there's a small area in here I'm looking at.
Are you saying anywhere in the HGR six or?
No, no, right on this.
Just on this.
On the street here, yeah, right here.
Right.
The HCR six in this, underneath the overlay, okay? Um and if there's a place on Granite Street where we might end up getting some infill development, it's gonna be right in here. Uh because there's still a little, a little room, okay? And like by that, I mean like an ADU added to somebody's property, that kind of thing, okay? Um and then you see up here, this is P fifteen already, so removing the Granite Street Overlay, by the way, this is in the comp plan. Okay, the two things I was talking about, the bed and breakfast overlay district and the Granite Street Overlay District are already in the comprehensive plan as items to implement under the land use section, so this is where it comes in, okay?
But the, there's a Grand Street Overlay go all the way down to the Wilcox Park?
It just goes to the corner.
It just goes to the corner.
Just to the corner.
What happens down toward Wilcox Park where you've got?
They're all P fifteen already.
Well, I know, but toward Wilcox Park, you've got law offices down there and all that. Is that part of, no, is that part of the Granite Street Overlay?
It currently is.
So are we going to take the Route one corridor and go all the way to that corner?
No, we're not.
So it's gonna, wouldn't if we removed the overlay entirely? Entirely, not not, not at the top of the hill, but toward the bottom of the hill, wouldn't it just throw them into another pocket? I mean, what what happens to their, what happens to that zoning then?
Well, the underlying zoning is P fifteen. Well, the underlying zoning is P fifteen, so those uses are already allowed there.
P fifteen, so that's it. So there's no change to them at all?
That's where the redundancy is. Anywhere you see P fifteen, under the Granite Street Overlay, it's redundant.
But if, if I have a home in HDR six on Granite Street, and I, let's say I'm close to this P fifteen near the restaurant on that next house, if I want to convert to a professional office, office space, I cannot, if we remove it. Is that true? Is that accurate?
Yeah.
You would be prohibited from doing that.
Except that I'm about to tell you, only in this section here, I'm about to tell you that what I want to do is I want to extend P fifteen this way.
Okay.
To, to that road. Okay, on both sides, I'm going to put the P fifteen in there because it's already, it, it's already growing. Right here, right here to that property, uh, street. Is that Bose and the Newton? Is that what it is? This is Bose, and this, and this is what? Summer? Yeah.
Development HDR six, according to her thing.
I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm going to show you in a minute. Oh, wait, I can show you.
I think she wants to bring it to, well, this would be.
Okay.
So these two.
Maybe this will show you better.
If I wanted to convert some, and take, take away this overlay, I couldn't to a professional space.
I'm going to, I'm going to blow this up a little bit.
No, no, Bose is, they won't even have Bose. We're at this problem, we're short of, we're two properties short of Bose.
I wish I could, but I could do it. I could do it, but I would be wasting a lot of time.
Take away the overlay.
Right.
Okay, so, so here's what, here's what I've got.
Yes. But if I want to take, if I wanted to take this business and make it work from all professional offices, I could not, man. That question, but if I take away.
Should we table, should we table this portion of the discussion for later? Because this is not part of the Route One Overlay, that Route One Corridor.
It, it, it is and it isn't, okay? Because
The Vos Street.
Well, we're doing, it is and it isn't, because we're including these.
Vos Street.
Vote, the, 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 um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lots around the Vos Street intersection.
Yeah.
We're including in the Route One Overlay.
Okay.
And we want to change those from HDR six to P fifteen, okay? Anybody not understanding what I just said?
So if it's an HDR six now.
Yeah.
And it changes to P fifteen, nothing changes.
Nothing changes for them.
And if down the line, they want to convert and have a
Offices.
There, there.
Right now.
Right now, they can use that under the overlay. We take the overlay away without converting it. And there's no differences in the setbacks between P fifteen and HDR six.
No.
There's no differences in any of the other underlying conditions between P fifteen and HDR six other than the ability to be able to have the commercial use on the mixture.
The other thing attached to your packet is the dimensional criterion for all of the zones. That's attached to here, and we can, you can look at that and you can know for certain. I think the only difference between HDR six and P fifteen might be the impervious surface. Oh, no, it says, look, it says P fifteen, any residential use permitted in P fifteen shall conform to the measure, dimensional regulations of the nearest residentially zone property, which is HDR six.
That's the properties that are behind it.
Yeah.
Of HDR six.
And then any other permitted use. It says, well, in general, it's fifteen thousand square foot lots. Yeah, and impervious surface is sixty percent, which you would not get if it was just simply residential, so. There is some difference there, but it's, it's on, again, already done on a case by case basis, it's built into the current code. Yeah. Yeah, I know.
So, Mr. Chairman, here's my concern. I, I have no concerns at the top of the hill. At the bottom of the hill, I, I don't think removing this overlay yet. I, I just think we need to think on that more, so if we can table it. I agree with what Nancy's saying, is remove and make it part of the overlay up to Highland. And if you look at the large building here, what that is, is the school building, the school administration building. So, and these buildings here are currently residential, but I could see that there, there is a possibility. So that all makes sense to me. So we're really talking about cutting this and taking this out of the making a recommendation, this is out of the Granite Street Overlay. But then I think we need further discussions and further information, then drive up here and.
We would have to make a recommendation to the town council.
Correct.
The underlying zoning for those lots.
Yeah.
Take this out of it.
So, I will make that a specific subject of discussion during the public hearing on November fourth.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
How's that?
Okay.
We'll pick it up then.
No, that's good. Is that what you can think about it and, and look at that specifically?
Do you need, do you need a similar discussion about the bed and breakfast overlay, or do you think that's?
I, I don't think the bed and breakfast one, because that ultimately doesn't change anything, because you can still do a bed and breakfast with anything. I think the only thing I would have for this one is if you can have a table that shows for those lots.
Yes.
What the specific differences are between the two or where they're the same. So that if there are any changes, it's very clear that, you know, this is the only change, it's sixty percent.
I can do.
Versus that.
The, the only thing that I'm real, I'm really, I think would make a very intentional move we need to make is changing the, these few lots that are in blue to P fifteen other than eight, HDR six. So, and, and I will focus on those.
Yeah, no, I, I'm sure that if we're going to make a change like that, that, you know, it affects a very small number of residents, very small number of residential properties. We're doing it very deliberately, we know what exactly that changes, and when people are here, they know.
Also, I would say just in case anybody's worried, every single person, person who owns these properties are going to get specific notice that this is what the change is.
Right, and I want to make sure that, yeah, the notice that we give them lays out that it doesn't if, if, that this is what the change means, and it doesn't mean you have to move out of your house, it doesn't mean that you're changing anything, it doesn't change anything you have to do in your house.
It just make, make, it just may make your property more valuable.
Right, it makes, exactly, it might make your property more valuable, right. Yes, first, go ahead.
I, I just have one question. Can I ask you why you want to change these into P fifteen? I, I don't, I mean, I live in this area, so I, I don't, I don't want it more commercialized. You know, as it is, Granite Street is a very busy road.
Yes.
And I think increasing professional use is going to make it even more busy, and we have the high school and all the traffic. So I, I don't, I'm, I'm curious as to why you would want to change that.
So, um, there's a balance here. When I, when I look at, when I look at that, I, I think, I look at the map with the various different districts. I, I think exactly of that. How, how are these districts, they're up against each other, is, is there enough of a transition? What is the benefits we're getting out of it? Long term, are there any other benefits that we would like to see? Now that we know how things are constantly changing, and one of the big things that's changing is that a lot of people have home offices now, and there's a lot of home occupations, right? Right there on that street, there is a number of single-family homes that are, or, or used to be single-family homes that are being used for business, okay? The one, especially right down at the bottom of the hill, at the intersection with Grove, right?
Familiar, yep.
Yep, and, and if we, if this community wants to encourage vitality and the, vitalness in the downtown and be able to say, you know, that this is, this is our center, this is where we want the activity going on. You might want to make more room for those things that don't have a big impact. So like, what I'm talking about is the law, the law firm, okay? They have maybe two or three people come in, park for the day, do their work, maybe they leave and go up to the courthouse, they come back. And then they might have two or, two or three clients come in any, and, at any, on any day to visit. It's not a lot of traffic, it's not more, no more traffic, no less than if that was a three family. So, this is the idea. Oh, Rose, do you, do you see where I'm?
Yeah, I, I understand where, where you.
It's.
If I, if I couldn't.
It's Land Grove, how's that?
Yeah, and it's, it's also not taking something away that they currently have a right to.
Right.
So right now, they have a right under the overlay to be able to use that property as a home office with the way the overlay is laid out. If we take the overlay away, we're taking something away from that property owner that they have a right to right now. Converting it to the P fifteen allows them to have that same right. And my only concern is, does it take anything away from them that their underlying existing zoning right now, the, the residential zoning gives them? And as long as we're not taking anything away, and it preserves the same rights that they have with the overlay, then it's maintaining the status quo by changing the zoning. They can keep it as residential, they can use it as an office. Nothing changes for them by removing the overlay.
But that, that professional use is going to be limited by the amount of parking spaces they have on site. Or the amount of space that they have, if they want to do it as a home occupation or a home business, they can only dedicate so much room to it, that type of thing.
So no one can come in and tear down one of these houses and put a, say, a three-story building in that's a business?
No.
No.
Not on this, not on this section?
No.
Okay.
No.
Yep.
That's more my concern than, I like the residential feel.
Yes.
Yeah.
Of, of this area.
That's what, that's what I want to make sure, is that we're not taking anything away from a resident by removing it. And that's what John's getting at, is that if we're going to take away the corridor, we're not taking away the right they already have without replacing it with the same right and not taking anything away from their underlying zoning.
What I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to give the town options and give the property owner options without them having to tear down the building. So give them incentives to stay there, or give incentives for another small, like, in, in this case, they were looking for art studios and stuff, or photographers to have a place right there.
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm trying to wrap my head around a decisive way to approach this. And by the way, HDR six does allow for home office and, but not more than X number employees.
Right.
What, I'm just thinking, what if I approached the ARB and say, okay, you got one through five, go down the uses that we have in the tables, instead of identifying it as P fifteen or, or business or whatever zone that we have, and just list the uses that we would like to see in these areas. Because I think even the P fifteen can be restrictive in going down the two sector. What, what we've, I've already faced that issue, but if, if we just go down the, just the use table, don't worry about where it's categorized as, and just see what interest comes up because of the way the feel of what we have there and where we'd like to see it go, I think I, I think that's the whole idea of creating the transect, you can specifically ask for simple, simple suggestions. I mean, I was getting more than frustrated when I had to see the type of trees, not so much signage, but all the other little innuendos that become part of the, the global picture. And it's like, we got to get down to what we want and what we want for uses. We get categorized in how we declare different zones. I doesn't, I don't think that's given us enough flexibility.
I, I think I, I agree with Paul, I agree with Paul, and I believe that we're, we're we're moving in that direction, okay? What, what we're doing right now is we're doing it on, we're, we're looking at the, of, of the entire thing, and then we're moving in on a, on a more micro basis, right? When we get through this process, the, one of the other things we need to do is look at the use table and see how is that working for us. Okay, and that's when we're going to be getting into more detail. Now, I have another example that I'd, I'd like to share with you that is, I think is accomplishing what you might be thinking about, okay? Now, this is another area that's currently zoned highway commercial. This is the block between School Street and Cross Street. There is a number of homes in there, some of them are empty. There's an empty lot where a, a house, a nice house was, was torn down. Across the street from all of these homes that are not fully occupied is the Babcock Smith House, right? And the poor Babcock Smith House doesn't have any neighbors. And we have an historic homestead there, and there's like no homes around it. The problem with the lots on that side of the street is that they're zoned highway commercial, and they really, the, the property owners themselves have been coming into our office saying, what can I do with this? Because there really is no commercial activity that would fit on these small properties. So I'm about to show you, that's where it is on the map, you see the map? Okay, I'm about to show you what we have on our mind. Okay, that's, okay, so this is the area, right? You see it in the circle?
Yep.
Okay, so the idea would be to turn, change this to P fifteen, which allows for multifamily housing, but also would allow for very similar growth as, as further down Granite Street, okay? But the idea would be.
Don't say similar, because Rose just said she didn't want a three-story house there, and we said we couldn't tear it down and build it.
She couldn't.
But you couldn't, you can't down there, but you can here because it's a larger lot, Rose.
I'm sorry.
A lot.
She would say three-story.
I know.
Office building. Yeah. Pot, it's possible, it's possible.
We need to vet those pictures.
But they could be used today.
They could be used today for housing, yeah, but not, but a multifamily housing only by using a, doing a comprehensive permit. Okay, but they're all zoned highway commercial. This is, this has been an issue since the beginning of, we started looking at Route One, this was like, oh, this is ridiculous, why are they zoned highway commercial? And they're a good buffer to the rest of the residential area. So this particular block, want to call it that. It consists of a few parcels, let me see, twenty-nine.
I think it's three.
Yeah, there's three or four actually, one, two.
One of them has a house on.
There's actually five.
So five, but the two of them, does one of them have a house on already?
There's two, there's two that are empty.
Okay.
And switching that to P fifteen would allow for that, what we call very light intensity services, professional services, but also will give us an opportunity to do like a row, row of housing. And the concept would be that it would be closer to the street, and you'd have all the parking behind it. So would they look more like, like a more walkable much better atmosphere.
It would look more like the atrium across the street.
Yes, there you go, there you go.
Did someone not do that today if they wanted?
Through a comprehensive permit, yes, but they'd have to own the whole property. Here's the problem, they're zoned res, they're zoned commercial, and they're owned independently.
They're all zoned commercial.
They're all zoned commercial, and they're owned individually. And that nice yellow house that's over there could be four units, but nobody's putting. Nobody's putting anything, any effort into it, into that home because it's zoned commercial.
So, okay, so Mike, so what's your proposal? That we rezone it to be residential?
We've res- to P fifteen. P fifteen.
Which could be commercial, which could be professional, or it could be.
Multifamily residential.
Okay?
Okay. You see, you see how I'm doing this? How about you guys over there, Lisa?
No.
Uh-oh.
All right, we'll get back to, and I think Ms. Vaca, right, you touched on it. Um. What, what is our ultimate mission statement here? I, I mean, uh, do we want, are we doing this Route One quarter study? Cause we don't think we have enough bikes on Route One, or is, is the Subway Plaza not pretty enough for us? It seems like what we're getting to, the heart of this matter is gonna be more housing for people. I mean, it, it started as Bennys was, now we have. We have marijuana friendlies, we have lumbered Bennys. I think some of the things are taking care of themselves. If we just sat and waited for, for time to correct Route One, it may have corrected Route One on its own, but. I'm starting to feel like what the true nature of this is, maybe hand out a few lottery tickets and, and give people some zoning changes. To, to make it easier to build more housing up there, whether it be above, whether it be above some plazas, or whether it be multifamily, which is okay if that, but don't. Don't sell us a bill of goods. Tell us what the mission statement is, cause I, I'm getting a little lost.
The mi- the mission is to be, to be sure that Route One may, becomes a, a. More vital commu- part of the community.
Well, but it's not gonna mean anything in the world.
So Dylan, I, I, the easiest way to frame it is that. In all honesty, sometimes we have rules in place right now that make it impossible to do anything with some properties. And, and these properties right here. Are like the perfect example of it, because we have like three properties where nothing's happened on them, because the rules that are in place right now. Uh, make them highway properties, but they're so small because they used to be residential. They were grandfathered in residential properties. I think we had a fire in one. One got uh condemned, right?
Yeah.
One, one goes afire, one was condemned. They got torn down, and then you can't build a commercial property on it, cause the lot's too small. But because they're owned by different owners, nobody can consolidate them to build a commercial property on it. So even though they got zoned commercial, after they were residential, now the rules make it impossible for anybody to do anything with them.
So Mister Chairman, one.
Yes.
Do you know Dr. Stelitano, John Stelitano?
I know, I know.
Remember, he was an old, old guy. He was, he was like, uh, he was superintendent of the schools, I think, at one time. Anyway, he has a small house on, or, or had this small house. And it is point one-five acres. It has a little white house on it. And it's zoned highway commercial. So Nancy brings up a good point here of to rezone this. To allow more flexibility in these properties.
This one would be changed to what zone?
P fifteen, just like the other ones.
Okay, and with that being said, that developed, that multifamily unit. Uh, we were just sitting here for fifteen minutes talking about architecture.
Yeah.
That ain't it.
No, that's, no, that's.
No, it's not it.
It is not it.
No, 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 that's a, I just asked Diego to get me an image of townhomes. That weren't brown.
He needs to change his style.
That's why I said.
The plate on this one.
Yeah, that's why I said the atrium across the street. If you were gonna make something there, and you wanted to tie it to the community. You're looking across the street from where the atrium is. You really wanted to make it consistent. Make it look consistent with the atrium, and even then, see, Paul's making that face.
Yeah, me too.
Because the atrium is.
You're fired.
But again, Paul, what did I tell you at the beginning? I like boxes. I'm sorry, I like Legos. It's a box.
That just would never fit in there. It just would stick out like a sore thumb.
The, the, what, what, regardless of what the picture looks like.
Yeah.
From School Street, I just clicked on the GIS on all the lots. School Street to Cross Street. Every single lot that fronts onto Granite is all highway commercial. So your proposal is.
Change it to P fifteen.
All right, you need?
Can they build a single-family house on it?
Yes.
And it can be used as a single-family house?
Yes.
Just like the HDR six with a bigger lot.
Right. It, it could go back to what it was used as before, which was a single-family home.
Three?
Yeah.
Be up to three.
Once those single-family homes got torn down, nobody could build a single-family home on it anymore.
Right, because of the zone change.
Cause the zone changed after those fellows were built.
Okay.
That's, that's where the rules trip us up, and we can't fix something that.
Right.
Should have been easy to rebuild the home there, and you couldn't because the, the change.
So this is an example, just for Dylan's um benefit. There are some empty lots here and some empty buildings. The empty lots, let, let's just say, they're paying taxes, but they're not paying taxes on a hell of a lot. Cause there's no building there, and there's no use there. And also, they pay, um, I'm not sure what the difference is between. Paying taxes on a lot that's own commercial versus residential. Maybe somebody here knows, but. By get in, by changing this, there's incentive for people to build on it and occupy it. And then the, you know, we get the additional tax income for that. So this is.
But we wanna give them a tax abatement anyway to, to offset that, right?
No, we're not.
Go away.
No, I'm not gonna give anything. I just want them to build up.
Mister Chairman, I ask that we pull the board to, to endorse the planner's proposal here.
Um, can I make one, one last statement, please, please? We have the best examples of multifamily from Route One down to Main Street.
Yes.
Every one of those bigger homes in the day are beautiful. Recently, you'll go down any street, and you'll see three of, four of them in the same block being fixed. Those are the houses that we wanna see the three families. Without doing major, plop one of those where that thing is sitting, you, you've got a home run.
Well, except, except for one problem. Except for one problem.
We're gonna do that, too.
You may not be able to fit one of those houses on here because of the setbacks.
Break them down, and you go, all right, so realistically. You're looking at seven hundred square feet these days. You're not looking at fifteen hundred square foot appointments.
I thought we get to it all in half an hour.
No way.
But the architecture, the cottages, all that stuff, we have perfect examples from.
And that.
One down, that's where that kind of housing should be, is rather recreating.
GIS, they're narrow lots, and that's really.
Well, not all of them. There's some of them are pretty good-sized lots, but they're not big enough to do anything on highway commercial with, so.
That's right.
I would ask that, we, we make them, you want a motion?
No, I, I.
No, no motion.
Board at this point, and I, I think we can pull the board.
Yeah, you know, fully endorse our idea.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Yes, I agree as well. So I think we have five agree.
So right, right now, the only thing that's kind of outstanding is the Granite Street overlay coming off at the bottom.
And, and that's only because I wanna make sure that nothing changes for those existing property owners.
And, and this is a very compact area, so that, I'm glad we're spending a little extra time on it, but I got one more thing I want to propose. In terms of a zone change.
Okay.
Um, this is on Tower Street, on the backside of the Granite Plaza. And behind um the restaurant on the corner. What is that, Ellis? Um.
Yeah, Ellis.
Yeah, Ellis. Okay, so there is four lots over there.
Yep.
That are residential uses. They're in a zoned neighborhood business. Uh, and neighborhood business is supposed to be for your local convenience store or a small restaurant or something. And, and, and this is where I'm, I am going to push for uh housing, Dylan. Because these lots are underutilized, and um if they're an ideal place for, uh, for some infill. Housing development, especially that one big lot where that's got the dot on it, it says HDR six. So here, my plan is to take it out of, out of neighborhood business and rezone it HDR six. The rest of the neighborhood is HDR six. And again, you'll give the property owners. Um, if they were going to sell, they can sell. It'll be, you can build a duplex there, you know, the, the whole thing. So that's the other rea- that's the last.
Nope.
This section.
So the only property that will be neighborhood business will be Ellis.
Yeah.
So right here.
Actually.
This is Ellis.
Yep.
This piece, all this piece, just be Ellis.
Actually, the ones, the ones that are in white behind Ellis, those are also neighborhood business.
Right, so that's.
But they're not in the district.
Hmm, so it's a residential property, then there's the fenced-in.
Tennis courts.
Tennis court, yeah, and then another residential property.
They, they are doing something over there with those tennis courts. I did see a big uh.
Okay.
Big uh crane thing over there. I don't know what they were doing.
You mean the lot that has all the fences around it and there's nothing in it?
Yep, just a fence. Yeah, it's like a fence and asphalt tennis court.
See Buick in the day.
Yeah. It wouldn't hawk see Buick.
I've seen people, I've seen the tennis thing across the middle of that lot before. I always call it a tennis court.
It's how it was, too.
Mister Chairman, ditto on this, that we pull, couldn't pull the board and, and uh, I mean, I endorse the.
So, so just to be clear, so those, those lots would become.
HDR six.
HDR six, okay, so they were.
Business.
Okay.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, I agree as well. So that's five zero, so I think that makes them consistent with their current use.
Okay, and, and I'm not gonna jump, jump into the signage. Just know that the sign, that these are, these are. Some of the examples, that there's an existing Vetrano's, is kind of like the signage that we're looking for in that area. They don't all have to be that big, okay?
With regards, with regards to signage, Mister Chairman, under, on, in this document, you have, starting on line two eleven. You have prohibited signs. Um, billboards, et cetera, snipes. Can we add LED or flashing, flash LEDs?
Yeah, it's in there.
It's under.
It's in here.
Yeah, if you go down and pervert uses, then the other section.
Oh, pervert uses, okay.
Under D.
So.
One forty D.
LED is not, okay, so it's not in there. All right, got it.
Yeah. Uh.
Thank you.
You really gotta dig into that to find everything.
Yeah, and, and Dylan, to, to what you spoke about before, so this is the area where you're driving slower. The signs are generally lower to the ground, smaller in scale. For Toronto's is a little bit different because it's up the hill. So it's a little bit higher the other side of the street, you know, the hope would be they'd be lower.
Can't really see the size of the.
Yeah.
Basically, you know, the Supreme Pizza side is really, really tall, okay? Well, the sign itself is probably the right side. This would just kind of bring it down and make it part of the, the landscaping, you know, so it. So it's just, it's not just this thing that's sticking up, you know what I mean?
If you looked at the base of this, of the Supreme sign, it's actually, the base is the right size.
Yeah.
Put the sign down to the street level, it'd be perfect. But again, we're not asking to bring the sign downs. These are all things that.
Hey, property.
A future time somebody builds.
It is.
This would be the recommendation, yeah.
Asphalt burn.
Okay, so let's go on to sub corridor two, okay? Um, this is, this is the, all the existing zoning, okay? Sub corridor two discussion uh begins, where does it begin? Oh, top of page five at uh line one forty-two. Okay, there is uh one small change in terms of the zoning. Uh, if you look at this version of it, you see the area, the, the, there's two lots there that are zoned GC. Um, the plan is to uh to support changing them to HC. Um, GC is very limiting in terms of what you can do with it. HC is more broad. That's really the only difference between the two of them. Um, and you see the rest of this area is zoned HC. So.
Where, where is that map? Cause I, do we have?
No, that, you don't have that map. Um, this, I've only given it to you here, cause I, I didn't. Previously planned, okay?
Lot of ink, we're trying to save money.
And what I, what I'm going to do is I'm going to put together like a, a flow chart that shows. Um, the, what the existing use is and how the zone change may, may, or may not affect it, okay?
Where are the two P, the P fifteens that are being preserved?
No, these aren't P fifteen here, no.
These are.
They're.
Where are we? Oh, oh, oh.
See the, see the, see the map, C seventy-eight.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't flip between two things. So if anybody has the GIS up on their thing, if they could look at it, tell us what it is.
Way back.
Oh.
First of all, high school.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Oh, I read that, over there, okay.
So, yeah, Ivanhoe is right above the Route One sign there.
At the intersection, one on each side of that, no, well, oh, you know what it is? It's the lot right behind Westerly Crossing, and then across, oh, the, the one that we were just talking about.
Right behind Westerly Crossing?
Yes.
That is. That is the more woods, the more woods.
Right, um, right there on the corner, they're both, they're both uh.
Is that an airport road?
Cause that's the triangle one across, across the way, that, that's the one with friendlies. It's right across from Friendly's.
Yeah, seventy-eight, where seventy-eight comes down, that's where.
Oh, it's on the, that side. Okay, I'm on the wrong side of the road.
Yeah, she's at seventy-eight on either side of seventy-eight, looks like, and then uh the Home Depot is there. And then did the lot.
Yeah.
Triangle is backwards, and I don't know what that other, I think that's a housing.
It's the two, it's the two right at the corner of Charles and Franklin Street. See, over here.
So it's the bank on one side?
The bank on one side.
And the cabinet.
So, how many cabinets?
Yes.
Sun cabinets, there you go.
I got you.
See, commercial, right? All in paper.
The general commercial and general commercial.
Okay, I just, I just had a question, it just popped up, uh, when I was going through this. Um, sub corridor one and two, on sub corner, uh, sub corner, uh, corridor one. Um, it stated as far as impervious surface, a maximum of sixty-five percent of the buildable area.
Yes.
Is that based on current usage, or how would this play in?
How does it, okay, how does it compare with currently?
Right, yeah.
Okay, so, um. Let's see. Right, right there, line one oh eight and one oh nine is what Chris is referring to.
I'm sorry, yes.
The, the difference now is that because it's, right now, highway commercial. Is all seventy-five percent impervious surface is allowed.
Okay.
Okay, what, what we're doing here is where, where we're having the most problems with stormwater.
Mm-hmm.
Is up there on Granite Street and Franklin, so um, the individual. Um. The individual numbers for these s- sub corridors are gonna change just slightly as we move east, okay? So instead of seventy-five, this impervious surface number reflects a reduction to sixty-five. And the total buildable area is in addition to what we have now. Cause right now, uh, for example, um, the granite, the granite site, uh, Granite Street site that we just finished up with. Um, that is seventy-five percent of the entire area they can go up to, and they're only at forty-five percent. Because they include the quarry in the, in the, in the calculation, okay? So I'm like, yeah, this, that, that doesn't work. That doesn't work. So if you have any unbuildable area, like, like um. Wetlands or, or whatever, i- it's not gonna count towards.
The total area.
Total area, okay, total buildable area.
Okay.
So that's the only difference there. Oh, and the other things that I've, that I've um put in bold. Those would indicate changes from what the underlying zone allows, okay? So that we can.
When you look at dime, and you look at it on the GIS, the vast majority of that property is impervious.
Yep.
With the smaller green in the back.
Mm-hmm.
And you're saying, in the future, if this wasn't here in an empty lot. We would say that no more than sixty-five percent of this lot, and what would you hazard? Any idea as to what this is now? This looks to me like seventy, eighty percent.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be, whi- which one are you looking at, Diamond Bank?
The Diamond Bank one, yeah, exactly.
Probably seventy-five.
Seventy-five, I'm sorry, seventy-five, yeah.
Okay.
But, but way, way too much impervious surface if you have a stormwater problem.
And again, this is something, th- this is in our comprehensive plan already for implementation. And this is a very small step in implementing it townwide. Um, the other small step that we're gonna take through, throughout the Route One. Um, the other small step that we're gonna take through throughout the Route one corridor is the integration of green infrastructure. Okay, that's another thing that's already in our comprehensive plan. That helps water quality. And why do we need that? Well, cause there is, I mean, there 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 in some some kind of. Um, oh, wha-. We're using the state highway to treat stormwater. The reduction in stormwater um onsite and treatment of stormwater onsite. Is a requirement of our MS four permit. We are not. Living up to those standards. The BMPs are way off, we need to, we need to continue to work, okay? Um, TMDLs are way off, that's it.
DOT.
DOT response. I will tell you from experience, we are the as restrictive as some of this may sound, you know, dropping it down ten percent and the like.
Yeah.
We are nowhere near some of the most restrictive communities I've dealt with. There are places where you have to have one hundred percent. Of all of your runoff on your property has to be treated on your property and infiltrated. And that's pretty standard in some community, zero.
Runoff is what used to be the standard, we can't allow, we can't.
I'm not even saying zero increase from runoff, I'm saying zero runoff.
Yeah.
Period.
Is is.
Which is.
The new standard.
A standard that a lot of communities have adopted in in the, not necessarily here in Rhode Island, but in other states around us, and it is. Making development increasingly harder and harder and harder, so.
So just.
We're not asking for something that most developers aren't used to, is what I'm getting at.
So for clarification, do are you making a recommendation here?
Yeah, both, all of these things that will be recommendations that are in the zoning code.
Ask for consensus of the board that.
Yeah.
Endured the recommendation.
Like the idea.
Uh, anything that's in bold here is we're going through it, so there's sixty five percent total buildable area from pervious for. Sub corridor one to help improve water quality so that we're not running into these issues because. The biggest issues with, right, like we just went through this with DOT and the permit for. Um, Franklin Street.
Yes, we did.
DOT granted the permit for the discharge onto Route one, cause they don't care if it goes into their system. But their system discharges into ours, ours discharges in the river, and we have a compliance issue for the river.
Yes.
So it's kind of like DOT said, yeah, discharge all you want, we don't care, because they don't get fined, we do, so.
I think I think someone has mentioned that.
Yeah, I know, it did come up quite a lot, so. Yeah, i- it's it's an issue, so this is a way to help reduce that issue, so you're okay with sixty five? Sixty five? Okay, five to one, five to zero, we're all good with that, so that's fine.
Can I ask? When you get to sub corridor two, uh at line one ninety six, it becomes seventy percent. What?
One, one, one question?
Yeah.
Okay, now, we just by poll vote, we said this is great on the sixty five percent.
Yeah.
Are we going through this entire document and voting on everything that highlighted?
We don't need, we don't need to.
No, but just if there's anything that's big like that, that's a big change that we all wanna make sure we're all in agreement on.
Yeah, right now, I I just love the love fact that you can get behind the change in the total buildable area thing. And the reduction in impervious surface on a general basis, like so sixty five in supporter one, seventy in supporter two. And we're sticking with sixty seventy five in supporter four, three and five, we don't have to worry about, cause it's all residential, it's not commercial, okay? So just, we don't have to go through each and every one of these, it will appear in the in. The zoning ordinance amendments when those are written, okay?
Again, this is. Something here that you wanna.
So it's readable and hopefully understandable, and it gives you paints a picture for it. This is not what's gonna go in the code, right?
So I guess we should, I guess we should also uh pull the board on uh. Line one ninety six about the seventy percent.
No, we don't need to do that.
No, okay.
That'll all be in the zoning ordinance when you see it. Yeah, so now you understand it, so when you see it, you'll understand it, right? Okay, so now I'm gonna go to three.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, this is three, it is all residential.
Impervious.
Yep.
And it's going to stay that way. Done, there's no changes, okay? The thing I wanted to emphasize here is there are some signs in this portion of the corridor. You see the one in the right for Apple Rehab and the other one for Ch- Chamber of Commerce. These represent the kinds of signage. That if anyone else came and wanted to put a sign in the corridor, this would be the type of signage they'd be asked to put together. Okay, most of this, the only other type of signage in this area are signs that they begin like. Um, that says um that you're arriving at Wood Acres, so let's say it's a development complex, okay? And there's some monument, what we call monument signs, they're kind of built into a little mini stone wall or something, okay? That's all good stuff too, we want to, we would encourage that as new developments come into play. That are right on the road. There's not gonna be a lot of that, so there's not too much to wor- worry about. So there's that, and the the thing that we're gonna emphasize in this portion of the corridor. And also in sub corridor five is working with Rhode Island DOT. On the infrastructure and the right right of way. And this is where we get into um providing better pedestrian. And bicycle circulation where it's needed, not just because, okay? And there was, these are some very subtle ideas, which are not going to be implemented. Until somehow we get a ton of money and we sit down with Rhode Island DOT and work the whole thing out, okay? But it's a vision, it's a vision, okay? Um.
Or or wait, um, I could just go back, cause for corridor four and five, when we talk about this.
Yeah.
Some of that might be trails, which may not take a lot of money.
Right, yeah, that's true too, that's true too, okay? So this one here, I I think.
Down bushes for us.
Most prominent example here is the one all the way to the right. Um, and that is where Old Post Road beats Post Road, there's that area of open space there. Um, it's a, that we could use that as an opportunity to give a little bit more of a buffer. To the residents on Old Post Road, there's also a historic cemetery there, so kind of giving it a little bit. More emphasis, um, and maybe putting them on some some kind of, it's something. That's welcome to Westerly type thing, um, where it's like like Westerly is historic, has historic downtown. Uh, something like that, cause you come into Westerly, uh people just drive back and forth, you know? Yeah, so, anyway, that's the idea, now those, the only, there's no real zoning ordinance changes for that. It's all gonna be in the description, um, and the information that we end up uh put putting into, okay? Uh, that's three, now we go to four. Four. Um, no zone changes. Four is four, okay? And this is where the, oh, the further east you go, the more impervious surface you get, and as I said earlier. Uh, the the further east you go, the bigger the signs can get, okay? So, um, because things are set back from the street, it's a lot more, but this is all centered around. Um, uh Dunn's Corners Bradford, all all of this, okay?
But we'd say the big, the signs are gonna get bigger, how much bigger, we're not.
Thirty six, thirty six square feet to forty eight square feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not talking billboards.
No.
No, no, that's all. And the height is going from sixteen feet to a maximum of twenty four. But the height of the buildings is not changing, okay? Okay, setbacks could possibly be reduced to zero. Um, here's an example of like when you do the info, this is not Route one, okay? We we had to get something off the internet, um, you know, putting the Chick-fil-A across the front. Filling in that gap that's over there and also get kind of as as a buffer for the other uh for the zone, what?
We're getting a Chick-fil-A?
No.
Don't, don't, don't fool people.
It's an example.
People watching this online are getting very fooled right now.
Pay attention, Matt.
Yeah.
Well, if we allow this kind of development, maybe a Chick-fil-A will come, you know?
All heard that.
Maybe.
Traffic is always an issue around.
Around Chick-fil-A.
That's why they.
But not on Sundays, not on Sundays.
Yeah, you think Starbucks is bad.
Yeah, that's that's why they have two lanes, and they have a place where you could, it's it it's accessible from the interior. Like the one in 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 Warwick, so there's all the backup, we all know that. I just did that yesterday in Massachusetts, it's the same everywhere.
Wow.
Okay, um, and then this is quarter five, okay? Now, I'm suggesting, well, this is mostly except for Haversham, it is owned residential, yes.
Um, how long do you think we'll be on five? Can we take a quick break right after this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we then we're gonna actually talk about comp plan.
We have Haversham, but don't we have um the Inn there also? That's the other one. Shelter Harbor. That's Crystal Street. There's a Shelter Harbor in.
Right, it's all in the same area.
Yeah, and then Haversham, yeah, they're the only two.
Uh, so here, I am making another suggestion. Now, the the properties all along this area of the highway are not accessible. From generally, not accessible from Route one. There's a couple of exceptions. These in this particular area here, which I wish I knew what that street was, but I can tell you it it's. It's it's the Pendleton Road. Um, the road Pendleton runs parallel here.
Is that Robin Hills area?
It's across from Robin Hills.
Yeah, yeah.
Cross from Robin. Lives down there.
Yeah.
What's this one?
Maori, this is Maori that goes down. Pendleton is actually right here, you can't really see it. And it ends right here in a cul-de-sac, okay? So these are zoned MDR thirty right now, um, and I'm I'm uh. Suggesting where you go, we uh they they're all legal non-conforming, they don't meet the thirty thousand square feet. Several of them do meet the twenty, so by reducing them down to the MDR twenty, they're gonna be more less non-conforming. And some of them are actually gonna be conforming, so um we, the only reason this came up is because. These five lots over here are owned by one family. Uh, and what they're trying to do is they're trying to subdivide them. Uh, so that they can they can build into maybe two or three, three properties. Um, because it's this whole area is um a. A stormwater detention area. Um, the stormwater from Route one and the DOT stormwater uh all floods into there. Uh, and there's a wetland there, most of this is wetland and they have no access to it, so what they want to do is use an existing. Access uh from Route one uh that's in this area and uh put in. Uh. Some, a shared driveway.
A shared what?
A shared driveway, I'm sorry.
So they wanna redevelop those into.
Yeah.
Those five lots into three lots?
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, yes, there's the shared driveway.
So they'll combine.
Our thirty, yeah. Twenty.
R twenty?
Yeah. So.
Oh, okay, so there'll be R twenty, so the smaller lots.
Smaller, a smaller lot requirement, cause most of them don't meet the thirty thousand square foot, anyway.
There's a big, there's a big wetland.
Yeah.
Uh, to, as you're going east on Post Road, you don't see it.
Yeah.
But it's there, it's behind that last.
Um, yeah. The DOT stormwater runs from the street into that area, that's what it is.
There's an empty, yeah, but there's another empty R thirty right next to the wetland, um. And what's the logic again? Because R twenty is in the area and these are the only R thirties? Is that the logic?
No, let me go back to the other map. Okay. Yeah, a- again, if it hadn't been for the fact that the owners are coming in, wanting to be subdivided, and we were looking at and going like, well, we can't build on this anyway. You know, uh, so this is this.
There's only one, I mean, I'm looking at all the others, all the others are fairly small, I think I know the one you're talking about. And and um, everything else is pretty much developed, there's only one that's in question here.
So.
And I would say, looking at the map and looking at the um, you know, looking at the air air photo on GIS.
It's these in here.
I I I actually, Mister Chairman, I think this is like out of the scope of the Route one. I'm not saying we don't tackle it separately, I think we need to tackle it separately if we wanna have further understanding of it.
Yeah.
But I don't, I think it's outside of our scope.
See this color orange, it comes down this way, and it goes over, that's MDR twenty. The bright yellow is MDR thirty, so basically we just move the MDR twenty across here.
Yeah, I I again, I I think this is, this is not fronted on Post Road. It is, but it's way back, you know, it's undeveloped, in between there, I really think this is out of the scope of.
So, so here's what I'm suggesting, is you said they're coming before you now?
Yeah.
To do this development, and they're gonna have to do a.
It's it's just.
Subdivision as part of this?
They they're gonna just, they're gonna erase some lot lines and do some other ones, yeah.
So would they also be able to request a zoning change when they do that subdivision? As part of a comprehensive permit?
If they had to, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
So could we tackle this as part of a comprehensive permit? And a zone.
No, it's just subdivision.
Or is it subdivision?
It's just moving lot lines.
Yeah, this is, this is kind of like for a personal reason, for one party, um, I think they would have to bring this to the planning board.
Alright, well.
And then, okay, I'm sorry, that's my feeling, I I don't think it belongs with us.
I I have no objection to us maybe talking about it, but it's definitely outside of the scope.
Yeah, I was just thinking, is if they if they're coming before you anyway for this, I'm just wondering, is that part of their? Would that be part, if 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 we were not doing Route one corridor, and this came up separately?
It would not be changing the the zoning, no.
If.
No.
No.
I just find it, it's it's a, it's a better fit for this.
Wouldn't it?
Yeah, if the use is valid, it is all, everything else is permitted.
No, it's it's just a matter of them being undersized lots, so they're substandard lots of record, which does limit. How much you can do, although even those rules have gotten a lot less stringent than they used to be, so it's alright.
But it's in the corridor already, right, don't we have a lot of flexibility to expose within the overlay?
No, when, in this section here, when it comes to the overlay, the the only thing that we're really affecting is.
Oh, right.
Quarter.
Oh, right, gotcha.
Right away.
If you looked at this on the GIS with the air photo.
Yeah.
We are, this is out, really, this would, we wouldn't even be talking about, this is out of the scope of our discussion.
Yeah.
I will drop it.
You can bring it up separately. Yeah.
I'm, it sounds, it sounds, it sounds to me like there's enough um concern about it. And and you're right, it is a little bit outside that, I just, so we'll drop it.
Okay.
Okay? One reason.
We kinda skipped over Route two, I mean, uh, Trans F two. Um, you saved a couple B fifteens when everything else around it was already highway commercial, is there a reason why you did that?
Uh, let me see, Paul.
I thought we hit him, the two B fifteens across.
Two?
Wells and.
Ah. Yeah, well, because because those are all residential right now, Paul. Those are all resi- he's talking about this area right here.
Proposed development from Dakota just consumed the whole back end of.
That's that's over here, yeah.
And now you've got, that's the bank on the bank across the street, you've got, it it's it's all highway commercial.
Again, if you if you look at this, however, um, see, especially these three long thin lots, there's. They're not, it's not really designed for highway commercial, um, and once again, um, this gives you kind of a buffer. From the residential to the highway commercial, if. If that's P fifteen, and it's in so close proximity to Wells Street. There is, and if you recall, when, when you came and you, we did the master plan for the corner piece, you were looking at offices. Right? Yeah.
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 It puts, it puts when you have a seventy-two unit development right using the access road to get through that property to the back. Then I don't think by adding more medical offices is going to help the the quarter.
But we have to approach that one issue at a time. I, but I think it would be worse if we went to highway commercial.
Well.
Uh, and there's, there's a woman whose home is like right here.
I agree.
She's uh, she doesn't want anything to be touched.
What's this?
Can we take that break? Yeah. So let's uh, it's eight oh eight.
Okay.
Let's take a five minute break. Uh, and we'll be back here at, we'll say a seven minute break. We'll be out here at eight fifteen.
Okay.
It's been. No. In China, so. They already did the seventy.
Oh, I thought you had to.
Sorry.
Right, right. I understand. Oh, yeah, we are.
All right.
We're back.
Call meeting back to order time is eight eighteen.
I just need to stop sharing, I think.
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
So you need to stop sharing.
Um, well, wait, what if I pull this up? Can she? I can share this. Not that one. Here it is. This, I'm gonna share this too.
So, Mr. Chairman, we were, we've all, this was all in our packet. So if we were to, how are we going through this? Just where we have issues? We're not going through from beginning. Are we going through from beginning to end?
Uh, I need, I need you to go through with the, this. Oh, well, first of all, we're gonna go through this next, if you don't mind.
Oh, that's.
And what I want to say about, about other zone, the zoning ordinance provisions. If you haven't already read through it and had all your questions answered, please read through it prior to, um, November fourth. Um, we are not going to be looking at this on November fourth, okay? We're going to be looking at these other two documents on November fourth. That and the plans for the zoning changes, okay? So this is, this is just to be handy to kind of explain where we're going and why, okay? Great. Okay, so, um, how can I do this? I am still such a newbie when it comes to dealing with these things. Um, all right, well, this isn't full screen, but I don't know how to get rid of it. Oh, wait. I don't know how to get rid. All right. How do we get this, get rid of that side? We here?
No.
Okay, so we just, are we, we've all gone through this?
No, that's a savings. All right, well, I can't, I can't do this, so anyway. Yeah, let's go, go through it. So we've narrowed this down considerably from the information that we started with many weeks ago, okay? Um, and so we have the revised version of travel in the corridor, which I believe this is the first time you're, you're seeing it. Um, remember, if you recall, um, and then we have the zoning and regulation amendments. These are just a general description of the steps that we're gonna take in the zoning, okay? Um, the infrastructure in the corridor, we've, we've previously discussed. Anything that has to do with an economic development incentive is gone. You hear that? Okay.
Looking at you.
There's a section on aesthetics.
And, and just so everyone's aware, you're on the, uh, report back from the town council. The entire town council, one hundred percent of the town council was very much behind no economic incentive.
No tax, yeah.
No tax incentives, nothing whatsoever. One hundred percent of the town council.
Yeah.
Good.
No tax incentives.
We got, we got a direction.
Yes.
Oh, but I love.
It was, it was very gratifying to see a hundred percent vote across the board of every town councillor. We do not want any money to developers.
So with it.
You should see the minutes from the EDC meeting this afternoon.
Oh, yeah.
I'm counting to that.
The saying, we got very clear direction.
So, Mr. Taylor, if we could, you know.
I gotta.
So page six of this document.
Yes, sir.
Aesthetics in the corridor. There's certain things in here. It says, develop uh, under the second, the second one, develop a sign program, encourage businesses to update and upgrade. Assign us to meet new requirements. Develop a tax program to encourage property owners to implement new building design criteria as it retrofits. So if you look over the rap, the right block, it says establish an incentivization program.
Oh.
Establishment. So is that gone based on our direction? Or what do we mean, or do we mean something else by incentivization program there?
Yeah, that, you're right.
Yep, that's a good catch, that one should.
Gone. Okay, cool.
And, and, and I apologize, I, I think, I think what I did was I gave you the wrong version of this document, since I had so many of them.
You don't need to apologize. There's a lot here, and there's a lot, and having done this before in other companies and corporations, it's not easy.
Put it out there for right now, go to page eight.
That's why we go through this.
And yeah, there's.
Okay.
Yeah, there are other tips, there are.
So.
Not ours.
On page seven,
Okay.
On page seven, under incentives.
Again?
Full section, yeah.
I, I don't know. He's, I, I don't know, it's page seven on the document that gets sent out to us.
Um, okay.
Could have been seven.
No, on this one, it's eight.
Maybe you got rid of it. Maybe you hacked it away.
Page eight. On the one I printed out.
Page eight.
Yeah.
Page eight on the one online.
I'm sorry, page eight?
Yeah.
Thank you. Page eight, yes, thank you. So, the first one, research and tax increment financing.
That's all the stuff that I was supposed to take out.
That's all been taken out. Okay, so the next four blocks, which deal with the structures and tax abatements, assigned rental assistance programs, and reduced building, building permits and utility hookups have all been removed.
Yes, all of that stuff.
Got it.
Is, is to be gone.
Wonderful.
I don't know why it's still there. It's not supposed to be there.
And then.
Glad we started with that. Good job.
Keep going down under redevelopment. Uh, I got a highlight here. Okay, yes. Design and implement a unified wayfinding signage system for destination services and district identity.
Oh, I had a picture of that. I didn't get.
That we, that we do have.
Hmm?
That we do have.
Yeah, that, I had a picture of that. I didn't.
That's all cool.
That's like the downtown ones that we have for downtown.
We're gonna use the ones that we have downtown, that style.
Well, not certainly that style, but. Diego had that, because Diego had the cooler ones for the different area. Because the downtown ones are more for like walking around downtown versus car.
Yeah.
Because they're slower speed.
But is it, but it, but I guess my question would be the same kind of look and feel, but bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll show you.
Okay. So it's the same design, only different dimensions or the locations.
Scale for driving, speaking, Diego, that.
Hey, page nine.
With the wave. It was, it's the wave thing he had.
Like that? Yeah.
It's not, it's not a final design.
No.
There'll have to be a kid contest in town with the high school.
Hills State.
Yep. Yeah, like the license plate. We'll see how it goes. It'll be, it'll be all six, seven, stuff like that.
Okay. Go back to that.
Here's one, here's one thing with regard to our whole approach to our community, okay? And I was thinking about this as I was reading it and, um, and looking at incentivizations and all of those things and realizing I wasn't ins, when there's an investor gap, you have to incentivize to get people to invest in your community, to come to community. We, philosophically, we don't, or, or just actually, we don't believe, uh, I guess it's a consensus. I know I don't believe that we have any investor gap in Westerly. That Westerly is a place that is desirable for a lot of folks to be at. It's a different business decision. Like if you want to build a big hotel, yeah, okay, there might be, there's no, you know, the economics aren't there, otherwise it would have built one already. Um, but for the most part, for most of the businesses, for most of the developers, for most of the people that are coming here, our goal here is, we don't see us being economically disadvantaged or having an investor gap. What we see, I believe, uh, what I believe and what I see is that we, through this route one corridor, provide an incentive for property owners to realize a higher and better use of their property by mixed use. Meaning like we're, you've got retail brick and mortar is kind of doing this, but we're gonna allow some housing in there too, and mixed use to create, one, a customer base, two, to address our affordable housing potential issue.
Right, our, our only.
All of that. So.
Our only.
With, our incentivization is through flexibility.
Right, and, and, and our only real disadvantage from an investor standpoint, when they look at a community like Westerly, is that we're a seasonal economy. That's the disadvantage that we, that we have from an investment standpoint.
From a consensus perspective, did anyone disagree or have any critique or anything about, we're all in that pain? All right, we're all on that page. Good.
Okay, um, how do you want me to go about doing this? You want me, you want to go through one at a time, or you just want to know that all the incentive stuff is gone?
All the incentive stuff's gone.
Yeah.
So we all know that.
They, I'm.
Didn't try to slide one past you there. All gone. Um.
I know I crossed it off of some document.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Some stuff on page nine?
Page eight, page eight. Research, action, financial, strategic location, one, four, the large scale development.
So my understanding is that the, we want to get rid of that entire section that says, provide financial tools. Get rid of all that. Okay?
One, one other question. Um, this is on page four, I believe it's page four. Route one stormwater improvement. Analyze the potential value of developing a public or private stormwater utility.
Yep.
Did that survive? Did we get any direction from the town council on that?
Um, no, they, the only direction we got from the town council, the previous town council, uh, was to not deal with, um, sewer um, at all. Um, but the, the idea of this, uh, private stormwater utility isn't new to just here. Um, it's, it's also in the comprehensive plan. Uh, it's, it's one way um, that the town can, with using an enterprise fund, can, can actually, uh, do a better job with, uh, managing that particular utility, um, and it, it's a lot more cost effective.
Well, it, it is, it might, it might be, um, and I won't.
That's why we said analyze.
It was introduced previously uh, over twenty years ago, and it died a miserable death. Um, casual, quick, brought it forward. So my question is, is, is this, um, well, I, I don't see any harm having it in here.
I think we're already.
But whenever I see feasibility study, I think consultants, when I think consultants, I think money, and I think.
Yeah, consultants are evil.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm sorry, I know you're a consultant, and I'm, I'm, I'm a consultant, you know, I'm a, I'm a recovering consultant, okay? So, but, but that said, um, I'm, I, I, I don't know. I, I, I just look at it with a.
Well, I, I think we're already in, 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 in certain respect, we're already, we're already kind of doing it. If you look at the stuff that we're doing right now with the Main Street program.
Yes.
We're already in sort of a public-private partnership.
Correct.
With, um, Fussin' O'Neill and.
Rhode Island DOT.
Rhode Island DOT and, um, boy, is my mind drawing a complete blank with, um.
Southern Rhode Island Conservation.
Thank you. Southern Rhode Island Conservation District.
Right.
Right now, doing exactly that for treating stormwater for, uh, the Main Street program. So we're kind of in a program right now where it's not costing us a dime to do it.
And it's not costing the property owners a dime.
Exactly.
To do it, okay, because when you talk of stormwater utility district, you're literally talking about having some sort of an assessment for impervious surface, et cetera, et cetera.
There are ways to go about doing it without actually having an actual.
Oh, okay.
So where's, the resilient front renewal on Main Street is being funded by grants.
Correct.
And one of the reasons why we can do that is because it said to do it in our comprehensive plan. So just having this in, in our comprehensive plan is something that we like to do. It's an opportu, if an opportunity comes around for a grant, we can say, oh, yes, this is a policy that we have that we've been looking forward to doing at some point, and yeah, here and now, this is the right time to do it.
And that's a good reason to have it. Okay, thank you.
And that won't cost us anything if that money presents itself. And some evil consultant will make money off of it, writing the feasibility plan.
I'm telling you, once you're, once you're, once you're rehabbed, it's so, it's such a great life.
So the, the basic tenet of all of this is, for this travel in the corridor stuff, it's going to be in collaboration with Rhode Island DOT, okay? And we've already made some progress with that through the, uh, our, um, safety analysis, okay? And there's actually, with that safety analysis, we actually have, uh, uh, we have some information in place that when that green opportunity comes along, we'll be able to actually implement, um, some, some of their, of the suggestions at intersections that really need it, okay? And you all learned already about with one forty Franklin Street, um, that there's that situation in the roadway at the intersection with Route seventy-eight that some, some, uh, lines and merge, merging lines and things like that can, can really, uh, ben, benefit. Uh, the travel in the corridor, those are the types of things that, um, we can look to this and say, yeah, this is the stuff, kind of stuff we want to do. Okay? Wayfinding signage. And there are all the zoning amendments and such are menched, mentioned in here. Because this is, once this gets into the comprehensive plan, then we can make changes and say that those changes are consistent with the comprehensive plan. We don't have to do everything that's in the comprehensive plan. We just kind of wait for the right opportunity, and sometimes time goes on and then you look back and you go, well, we don't really need to do that anymore. Okay? That's why it's a kind of a twenty-year horizon we're looking at. All right, so that's my description of all that. Unless you want to go over any more details. Mr. Gagne, any more details?
I think we have already.
Anybody?
Gone through most of these in pretty excruciating detail in the past.
Mr. Devine is off, quiet right now.
Paul, I just had a quick question for you, because I noticed.
Is that an invitation?
No, no, no.
No, no, no. Do you, do you need anything? Now, I'm here to answer your question, so you have them, let's toss them on the table. We still.
Paul, Paul, any, uh, the EDC ones that jump out at you, um, that you guys have the action lead on, that, uh.
ARB.
Or, I'm sorry, the ARB one, sorry, that, uh, you guys have the lead on. So that there was a couple on the signage stuff that fell into yours, but I don't know if there's any that, uh, developers. Oh, yeah, for the presentation, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that might be helpful.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and work with Diego, see what he's got and what else.
I, I'll, what I'll do is I'll have, I'll have Diego, um, reach out to the members of the ARB and with a very brief description of what this postal New England stuff is supposed to be, and then said, send us images of that.
Yeah, there you go. That works. All right. Thank you, Paul.
Okay.
We've been here too long, because I'm just a little.
We have an assignment for the EDC between.
ARB, and I'm reading, I'm reading, uh, EDC off the thing. I'm like, hey, Paul, the EDC? I'm like, yeah, whatever agency you're from, whatever it is, whatever it is you do over there.
All right, the, the, the last thing is the document that says, starts with part one. Okay, now, for those of you who are not that familiar with the, um, with the comprehensive plan, get familiar with it. No, I'm only kidding. Um, the, I, I want to explain that there's part one in the comprehensive plan, and there's part two. Part two is all the background stuff, all of the information, narrative, existing conditions, what some of our challenges have been in economics, what's some, what's the situation with housing and all that. And a lot of the content is based on what the state requires us to put into the comprehensive plan. What type of research we need to do, an analysis, okay? The part one is the part that's, the part that we apply, okay? We apply on a regular basis whenever someone asks, is this consistent with the comprehensive plan? We don't look at part two, it's part one. So when we make, when we make a amendment to the comprehensive plan, we, it is done in the form of a zoning amendment, an ordinance amendment. And the vehicle by which we do that is by making some text changes to chapter ten of the county code, which is all about the comprehensive plan. And that, that's just sort of the mechanism by which we do it. But what that essentially will do, it will say that on such and such a date, the town council is adopting uh, certain packet of amendments to the comprehensive plan to implement the route one, the policies and, and goals, policies and actions of the route one corridor study. Okay, in this format, not in the format of the study, but in this format, okay? And it's because, it's a, it's an actual ordinance amendment. So it needs to be advertised for three weeks in a row for the public hearing. A public hearing is done. It is a legislative process, okay? Which means that you're gonna discuss these changes, not any change to the comprehensive plan. It's just gonna be these changes.
Okay.
It's focused on it, all right? Trust me, you don't want to go crazy because you'll get lost in all kinds of things. So the only pages in here that you may not have seen up to date, if you've been trying to keep up with me, um, would, would be starting on page fifteen. Yep, so I'm, I just, just let me make that statement, the stuff, starting on page fifteen is all the new stuff that describes the route one corridor district in the way I, I am suggesting it get described in the comprehensive plan itself, okay?
Okay.
All right, and go ahead.
Your favorite language is gone.
So, within, okay, on page fifteen.
Yep.
I want to make sure that we're absolutely, because I know some of our citizens. It is the second, third paragraph down. It says, the route one corridor study was completed in August of twenty twenty-two and accepted by the town council in the spring of twenty twenty-three. Okay, well, no, but that's my, that's my point, because I remember there was a huge dust-up here. Did we accept the document or the, so how do we?
So here's.
How do we make sure that this is accurate?
Let me make, let me make it clear, so.
So I'm not taking a position either way.
I want to make sure it's clear, so there's, they didn't approve the document, and that's the key word. They accepted the document from, um, West, uh, who were, Weston and Sampson. Weston and Sampson provided the document with their list of recommendations, said, here you go. We presented it to the town council, I think, uh, I was there, um, and, uh, Justin and, uh, the members of the Rock were there. We presented it to the town council, and the town council said, we like these recommendations, we don't, don't like these other recommendations. And the question came up of, how do we proceed?
Right.
And we said, well, we want to, you know, to change the report. I said, well, you can't change the report, but you can accept the report, and you can choose to do with the report whatever you want. You can choose to take it, throw the whole report in the trash. You can take it and pull out the parts that you want to use. You can take it and discard the elements you don't want to use. So they accepted the report. They didn't approve the report in.
Okay, so what we say accepted, it's kind of like you've been served.
Manually, manually.
Look, can I make a suggestion? Is the point, you want to change it to reviewed instead of accepted, because they reviewed it and they accepted some pieces and didn't accept some others?
I, I don't know, that's what I'm saying, if you, however.
So if you want to say reviewed, that's something, what they did.
Have received.
I got this.
Received and reviewed.
Reviewed with the council.
Yeah, accepted as completed, except, or accepted the completed report, however you want to say it.
Would you say reviewed the completed report?
Review the complete report.
Reviewed.
Okay, so I would say.
Yeah, reviewed.
Reviewed.
Because somebody's gonna bring it up.
Yeah.
Is it important to say here, look, I think it's important for everybody to understand that at that point, what was the concept of the route one corridor and moving forward in developing an overlay district was endorsed by the council. But this, this, there were specific act, aspects of it that they rejected at that point. And those we did not continue in.
And just, but just to be clear, the re, the only reason why this didn't go back to Weston and Sampson, for Weston and Sampson to say, extract certain elements of this and redo it, is because to do that would have cost the town more money.
Yeah.
That's the only reason why it didn't go back, because they asked that question, well, why don't we just pull that stuff out and strike it out of the report? And we said, well, because it's a stamped report from an engineer, you can't just strike whatever you want from it.
Right.
I said, well, we'll send it back and have them review it. And it's like, well, do you want to pay them to do that? Said, no, we don't want to pay them, we just want them to fix it. Well, you gotta pay them to fix it. Well, we'll just forget it, we'll just take it as is, and we just won't do those things, and that's.
That's the point.
So, but getting back to what the council accepted and endorsed, okay? They accepted and endorsed, if you will, that broad concept of bringing continuity and improvements to the route one corridor.
Right.
That's what they endorsed.
Only supposed to describe how, how we got to the public hearing that's gonna take place in January.
I'm just trying to arrange it. So I read it with a critical eye, and I'm just trying to arrange it, language that in there that is gonna be generally accepted and not discussed or created.
You could even just say, if you really want to go that route, you could just say the route one corridor study was completed in August of twenty twenty-two and presented to the town council in the spring of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, but somebody's gonna say that it was more than a presentation, we had this big, long discussion over it, yeah.
That's true.
So I think rev, it was reviewed with town council, and then they referred it to the planning board, is.
Okay, yeah, we, we did it to the planning board for action. There you go, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, well, actually, it was. It was presented to the town council.
And then the next.
Recommendations from the council were provided and, and, and it was referred to the.
Yeah, that's fine.
Planning board.
Yeah, so I think that's what, yeah, so we just say it was reviewed by the town council, and then it was referred to the planning board to focus on zoning-related matters. So I think that's fine. Reviewed. Approved was the word we were trying to avoid.
Yeah, yeah, approved is not.
Approved is not the word I would use to ever describe that meeting.
Maybe physically accepted.
Physically taken in hand. Approved, not so much.
They, we really did review it enough for us to know moving. They, we really did review it enough for us to know moving forward, not to talk about sewer extension. Yeah, so there were really, we did get.
Just like a design submittal, right?
Right.
Reviewed.
Reviewed.
Revised comment.
Yeah.
No, whatever, just reviewed, that's it. We didn't approve it.
So. Right. The, the, the next paragraph. The planning board reenlisted the Architectural Review Board and Economic Development Commission for further collaboration on the comprehensive plan amendments. All great. Planning Board met with and, and uh you know, all, all of that is really, really good. There is and what, and maybe this is just coming out of what I just walked out of at the EDC meeting, but periodically, there is confusion as to the roles and responsibilities under, you know, what the EDC plays, what the ARB plays. Because if you look under state law, there's no EDC, there's no ARB. Those were creations of the Town Council. Uh, not this necessarily this Town Council, but the, but Town Councils. So I, you know, in this paragraph, I think this is an update to our comp plan. This also talks about how we operate, I believe, as a, as a community, correct?
Can I make a suggestion to help you get this?
Sure.
How about we say the collaboration helped the planning board reach consensus on descriptive and regulatory recommendations?
Well, it's, I'm not, y- yeah, I'm not concerned about all of the collaboration and the, and all of us reaching consensus. I think that that's all very positive. But I think in somewhere in here, there's, there is some degree of confusion periodically and it has happened for years about where the roles and responsibilities lie and how everyone needs to kind of get on the same page. Because when you have things that are established in state law, the planning board, planning board is responsible for economic development, right? But planning board is responsible for reviewing um designs and, and, and things that come through. The Town Council has created these other silos that I believe the original intent was for the ARB to assist the planning board. And having a level of expertise that the planning board doesn't necessarily have, but they can make recommendations. So there's a, there's a natural flow there of how it's in, it's supportive. The ARB is in support of the planning board. The EDC is in sup, in theory is in support of the planning board if we're going to follow by the letter.
So do you think you just need like an extra sentence in between there to describe the role of the EDC and the ARB?
Yeah.
Organizing. I think we can accomplish it by changing a word.
Yep.
Um, so the planning board, it says reenlisted. I think we could say instead of reenlisted, sought input from.
Okay.
And that captures the concept that Mr. Gagne is raising.
I like that.
Yeah. Chairman, this is not appropriate time, but there is some logistics and timing that our board's got some concerns with. So that our material comes to you uh. That's not long before discussion.
Okay.
If you would like to do that, um, Paul. Um, Mr. Chairman, you know how the EDC is coming um on the 21st to discuss something with the board? Um, can I invite Mr. Arzenero to come to that meeting and discuss? Um, what he wants to discuss is uh the timing for, between the ARB and the planning board so that we can, the planning board can be sure that they've gotten the ARB's a formal decision. So if I, if I may, I can add that to the 21st agenda.
Yeah, no, I think it'd be great. Yeah.
So Paul, I'll get in touch with you about getting you on that agenda for October 21st. Yeah. That's another.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Madam Planner?
Hmm.
Excuse me, um, I, I was just writing down what the EDC had. November 17th is supposed to be a workshop with the Town Council?
No. November 7th is going to be a work, a work, a public hearing with the planning board. And we're inviting the EDC and the ARB to have a joint meeting with us so they can participate. And anyone else, it'll be advertised so anyone else can come and participate. Then the planning board has a November 18th meeting. Um, a regular meeting. And I think what my plan was to finish up the public hearing on that date, if possible. Um, otherwise December, the first Tuesday in December would be the day that the planning board would make their recommendation to the Town Council. And then the Town Council will receive it and have to schedule a public hearing in January.
Somebody might want to let the EDC know that.
Why?
Because they have a little different schedule. They had November 11th, okay, EDC meeting, that's regular. Um, November 4th, planning and EDC.
Yes, that's right.
November 17th workshop with the Town Council.
Well, they might be doing their own workshop with the Town Council. I don't know.
But that's before you, that yours is uh the 21st, right, with them?
No.
The fourth?
Ours is the fourth.
The seventh is the workshop?
I tell you, I'll tell you what, uh, Ru, Rose, um, I, I will communicate with them.
Um, okay.
We haven't been communicating uh recently.
Okay.
Um, I expected two of the members of the EDC to be here tonight and they didn't. I guess they, they decided um that they'd probably wait till the fourth. Um, and they don't yet know that it's going to be a public hearing, so.
Okay.
I'm going to communicate all this information to them, so I'll make sure.
Okay, because I had just written down, th- this is what they had said in their meetings, so I'm, now I'm confused.
Okay, okay. So thank you for pointing that out to me. I will coordinate with them. Um, I've coordinated these dates with uh the Town Manager, who, who I assume it, if he hasn't already, is going to talk to uh Council President, uh do him all about it, okay?
Okay, thank you. Yep.
Would you CC the chairman on that email as well? That way everybody's kind of working with the same set of dates so that we don't have to come back for a second.
Yes, and I intend to put everything in, in an email within the next few days because we do have to get the notice out to um into the newspaper. So, yeah.
Yes, sir. I, Nancy, you said, uh, I'm doing a little research on, on Hattie Moore's charter question and trying to keep track of this, so. Uh, if you could report that price tag to Sean, so we have to, we, we have to advertise this for three weeks in the Wesley Sun, is that what you said? It, for the public hearing?
Three successive weeks in a row for the, for the um, because the planning board and then three successive weeks in a row.
For the town, okay, and this is not in a bridge version. I'm assuming you're going to be, how much of this, well, whatever it is, just keep track of that price tag and, and uh give it to the Town Manager. I'm just trying to.
Yes, we, we've already estimated that to be uh over a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars each time we put it in the paper. If we had to run the, the whole thing. I think that was for the actual, for the zoning code amendments. Um, but we've, we're working on other options.
Gee, I wish I knew somebody on that charter revision committee. I don't know what they were thinking on that question. Maybe we can change that one the next time around.
I, I, I don't think it.
Can I make that?
Say.
How do I get that on the, how do I get a ballot amendment for the election on the fourth so that we can change that to an online on the website going forward?
Look.
There was a Town Council who wanted to uh add a fiscal note to that question, but he was, he was overwritten, lost six to one, I believe.
Okay, so, so.
Chris is talking about us.
All joking aside, is that we are going to try to find um the correct method to advertise this without having to publish the entire thing. Because it, as long as there is physical access, everyone who's reading the newspaper can get physical access to the information. It should be sufficient. Okay, and I'm saying that from my perspective as understanding what notice is supposed to be, okay? Now legally, we're, we talked about it just today. And um I'm going to put something together and I'm going to run it by both legal councils and we will figure it out, okay?
Can we, can we go by uh, can we go by federal law where we just have to set up a public repository in a couple of different locations in town?
Well.
No?
Art. The concrete, the, the, the state statute on the comprehensive plan amendments in particular say the purpose is to be able to collect public comment.
Right.
Okay, so the notice just has to give you an op, the, show you where to go to give public comment. We are going to put this on the town website and open it up for a public comment the same day that it's advertised in the newspaper. And it will be open for public comment through the end of December. So that if you don't hear about the comments, the plant, the Town Council can, okay? That's all it needs.
Yep, okay.
The chairman, page, top of page thirteen.
Well, thirteen?
Top, top of.
Going backwards.
Nancy, top of page thirteen. Okay, that's, that's our experi, experience that the Western residents desire, blah, blah, blah. And it goes on. The, it says, the last sentence in there. Through changes in zone, through changes to zoning, the town will provide incentives for mixed commercial professional services in the redevelopment of Route One.
Opportunity.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, because again, we get incentives and everybody has a different. And the next paragraph down, densely built, we got an extra space between densely and built.
Yeah, it was hyphenated and it said, it's not supposed to be hyphenated. It, it automatically made it two separate words. I know, it doesn't look good, but uh. You want me to argue the way it's spell check? Yeah. Okay. All right, anyone else? Chris, Forrest.
Um, okay, page, page one.
One? Guys are killing me with that. Oh, we're not backwards.
Hey, I don't get a chance to talk.
All right, now go ahead.
I don't know if you noticed that. We, we should, we should bet. If I miss something, I should have to give you.
Meaning for nothing, it's not fun. I mean, it might be long, but they're fun.
All right.
Yeah, really.
And this is, this is just a question and I have some comments and it's not going to change stuff, but question on this one, we're talking about uh the commercial corridor will be vibrant, distinctive, inviting safe and reflective of the town's character, okay?
It's the vision for one.
So the planning board does not have any power or ability to decide what commercial uses are coming into town. Right? And on which, we have no right on that. So people come in and they buy a store, they put something in. So how does, how does that? Yeah, how does that, how does that fit in, how does, how does that fit into inviting safe and reflective of the town's character? Because we really don't have any effect on that.
Well, but what we do have the effect on is the aesthetics, the uh experience on the corridor, all those incidental stuff.
Okay.
Okay?
So, yeah, that's good.
And I will say that the seventeenth auto body store is, you know.
Is it coming?
It is. Is consistent with the character of the corridor.
Okay, page three. There we go. And nails, okay. Let me wait for Nancy. Okay. Page.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Page three.
Okay.
Um, I've, uh, the line, this isn't a change or anything, but it says the town will support quality redevelopment with consideration given to road capacity. And I thought that was very important. I'm glad that's in there, road capacity. Um, two paragraphs down, it said, uh, pass complete streets resolution of smart growth policy that directs the town's Department of Development Services.
Oh, right, yeah, we don't have a department.
You may want to delete that little sucker, yes.
Yeah, we don't have Department Development Services anymore.
Okay.
Okay.
And I also, let me just see, that was, that was an old one. Oh, uh, top of page five.
Could you do a global check for that? Because I thought we did a global check for Department of uh Developmental Services before.
It'd been pulled.
Well, I'm, I'm only going to do a global check through this one.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah. I, I was just saying, I thought we did it once before, so.
Okay, um, top of page five, uh, they're talking about the ARB. And it says, um, hey, um, existing DPR with Architectural Review Board Oversight. I'm not sure if it's oversight. Is it insight? Is it suggestions, involvement?
Right.
It may just be a wording thing, but it disadded a little.
Thank you. I think insight is, is a good word to use. Okay, that's it.
Some of them have already been picked off, um, so that's fine. Um, on page three, just a question, uh, the town will support quality development. Would we be supporting anything else? Does that need to be there? It's an understatement. It's Westerly, we're quality all above, all, all over the place, right? Um, on page four, there's a few places where DPR is used at the beginning of the sentence. Should that be the DPR?
DPR, the DPR. No, DPR is Development Plan Review. It's a process.
I understand that.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't believe the.
Okay.
No.
Page seven.
Thank you.
Second paragraph down, up, up from the bottom. Where it reads, uh, incorporation of E-Green, does E-Green have to be capitalized or hyphenated or whatever right there to E-Green Infrastructure or just should the E be dropped and just green infrastructure?
Yeah, I think the E is actually crossed out. You just can't tell because of the type, but yeah, the E is going away.
Okay.
Anybody else through page seven or eight? Then we can keep going.
Okay, I just, I had last, one last one. Uh, page thirteen. This is just, this was just a question, okay?
All right.
Uh, the bottom of page thirteen, there was a sentence taken off that was added, then taken off of this recognizing Westerly Regional Leader and Resiliency and will continue to pro, promote its beaches, open spaces and historic places. And I'm not quite sure why it was put on and then stricken off.
Okay, um.
It's bottom of page thirteen, yeah.
Oh, I remember why it was taken off.
Okay.
You do?
I do.
Why?
Because it, uh, because it doesn't have anything to do with the economic development. That's why, because the section it's under.
Oh, we thought direct economic development.
And it didn't have anything to do with economic development. When we read it, we were like, why is that there? It doesn't have anything to do with economic development. It's exactly, it's a beach thing.
A button piece thing, yeah. All right. Okay.
That's pretty good. I remembered that one.
Anything? Anything on fourteen? Going once, going twice, fifteen, back on fifteen, anything?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, sixteen, so this is the, this is the, the meat of it. So we, we've got some maps coming up and this verbal and kind of a visual illustration, not complete mapping of the corridor. Okay? Five subquarters, the reason why they're named the way they are and some of the characteristics of each. So this is more like an existing condition statement and a little bit about how we, well, how we want to pursue this, okay? So like, for example, if there, if, if you're HC, you're going to be HC, that kind of thing. All right, edge.
Just a question on.
Yes.
Page fifteen. Page fifteen?
Yep.
Uh, one, two, three paragraphs down. Uh, in 2025, staff and planning board members launched a concerted effort. Had it been ongoing already? Do we just change that to continued? Or accelerated?
Okay, I'm trying to find it. On 2025 staff and advisory board members concerted effort to expand the findings of the Route One Corridor Study, choosing to focus. choosing to focus on issues of building, that's, that, anything that's, that's in that darker color there, that's, um, Diego, proofreading me. Uh, so that's Diego language, huh, what, what it, now that I found it.
The question on the word launched, it makes it sound like there wasn't any work going on, could you just say something like, uh?
He wrote began work and he changed it to.
Launch.
You wrote began work and he changed it to.
Launch.
Launched a concerted effort to expand findings of the Route One Corridor Study, choosing to focus on.
So if you just change launch to like accelerated?
Uh, I'll go from.
That would be great.
This, board members.
Because otherwise, it sounds like everybody was asleep until he came on board, that's not true.
Well, there was, there was a, well, there, there was, I guess what I was trying to e- express here is there was that period in twenty-four where things kind of stalled.
I liked Derek said accelerated, accelerated in existing process or advanced.
Advanced, oh, I like that. Advanced. Yes.
On this sub corridor, uh, titles.
Page.
Same page, sixteen, is there?
Sixty?
Sixteen.
Does that mean?
Yeah. Go, go, go to, um, the description of sub corridor three. Okay, if you, if you look.
Where's that?
Yeah, so the description is on, whoops, page eighteen. That's okay. I just made the list and then I repeated myself.
No, because they won't, yeah, they won't redo it the next year.
Okay, and, um, the, as you can see, the, the num, uh, some of the, one of the changes that, uh, Diego made for me was that the fact that the parcels number was actually half of what we originally thought it was, just because of the way it was added up on the spreadsheet, I guess it was, things were counted twice, so, so, um, so it's actually, the number of sub corridor is eighty-six parcels, two, and one is eighty-six, two is sixty-two, three is one forty-one, four is thirty-three parcels, and five is eighty-six. And all of those people, plus everyone within two hundred feet of them, are all going to have to receive notice of the town council public hearing in particular. Not yours.
It's because it's all underlined, directed text at one show.
So.
I'm sorry. Uh, page nineteen, uh, we had talked about this before, um, there's a sentence that says the Havisham Inn is the only notable business. I think we have to change that to Havisham Inn and Shelter Harbor Inn are notable businesses.
You know what, Shelter Harbor Inn, it's just the entrance that is, it's actually not in the corridor, it's off of the corridor.
Oh, so it doesn't count?
It's.
Oh, okay.
One, it's actually not in it.
Okay, okay.
Wait, wait a minute. But that, you stopped right at the road.
Yeah, I know, but, but that, but that, but neither is Havisham, because Havisham is literally off the road.
No, but it's in the.
It fronts.
It's in the corridor.
It fronts the road.
But the corridor. What is the corridor in? It ends, it ends at the town line, right?
It is, yeah, but.
So Shelter Harbor Inn's in there, it doesn't hurt that.
Well, let, let's look it up on.
With a nod and sensitivities to inclusion these days, it should be there.
White building right there.
Who else forgetting about it? But without Shelter Harbor Inn, you're good point.
Let me see. All right, well, thank you very much for your time, I'll look that up.
Yeah, double, because I think when you look at it on the map, if you look at that little drawing that's right next to it on page, wherever that is, thirteen, at the bottom, the Shelter Harbor Inn building looks like it's just outside the green boundary at the edge of the corridor.
It, it is, but the whole, the, the complex fronts right onto Route One, and if you look at Havisham, I can't get, Havisham is not on, truly on push.
Havisham's within the cell.
There it is, right there.
Sort of, but you, you're not on one when you're pulling in the driveway, you're in some other way, I don't know what.
Yeah.
So. At bottom, bottom line, we have two businesses down there in that sector, and I think they should both be reflected.
On this drawing, it's in it. Yep, that's in the code, right, inside the blue. Yep, and then the Shelter Harbor, the entrance to Shelter Harbor. Yeah, right there, but then the inn is outside of it, yeah, that's the inn. The inn's not inside the blue boundary, the inn's right there.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, is this meant to be on the record?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, we're having a side discussion.
Sorry, no, we were just trying to look at the map closer to identify where Shelter Harbor fell, inside the blue boundary or outside the block.
I will.
We're adding.
Provide a map just for that, I was.
Sorry.
Uh, on. Okay, are we done, are we done? For the next meeting.
Yes.
There was a discussion, as we said, we attended, uh, I attended and, um, Mr. Devine happened to be in there too, as the EDC meeting, and this discussion that we had earlier about you had really good conversation with the town council, and they were singing the praises of all this collaboration between all the bodies. After the EDC meeting, I was having a discussion with one of the members of the EDC, was totally unaware that Rhode Island, under Rhode Island general law, the planning board is responsible for EDC.
Yeah.
So.
Economic.
Economic development.
Yeah.
No, I, 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 I get that.
So, so what I'm, what I'm saying is at some point, I think between our solicitor, between ourselves, between the chairman of the various things and the town council, of how do you want all of this to work? In other words, under Rhode Island general law, the Rhode Island legislature is clear. It works through the planning board, so from a, from a town, from a town council perspective, if you have an EDC operating independent or an ARB or any other board or housing board, you just created a housing board and you create them independent, both of those things under Rhode Island general law, correct me if I'm wrong anywhere here, uh, are all the, under the, under the, the.
I.
Purview of the planning board.
Yeah, I would tell you right now that the town council direction they've given me, and I think they gave it to me last year when I was.
Not to you, it's not to you, realize, so a town council unwittingly, okay? A town council can get set, can create confusion, it can give direction to an EDC or a direction to an affordable housing committee that they're not giving to the planning board, in other words.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Your conversation of the collaboration and coordination, I think there needs to be a clarification that somehow, I'm not sure how, the best way we go about it, maybe, listen, look at help us here, of all the boards understanding as to what the rules are and an understanding with the town council, where, where we get our direction from, who do you want coordinating and how do you want this stuff flowing?
Well, when Matt came to his last, it was a couple, couple meetings ago and presented to us, I said basically, I, I, I believe everything should come through the planning board, so I would prefer like a chain of command, EDC, the architect, architectural board, everything, I want to have everything come from this board to us, that's what I, I asked for at that meeting.
And I, and I think that's what the president said as well, that everything should come through the planning board, and that was his preference.
Let, let's just make sure that all, all, all the boards are on the same page with regard to that, because you see it as, I, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but do you see this board refining the ideas, the raw ideas that are coming from the other boards?
Yeah, and I, that's how I, I would like to see it come to us too, because this, this is the board I trusted, everything in, in the EDC and, and the other board you mentioned, all by general law reported to the planning board, so that's the natural chain of command, so I only, I only want uh, anything we will, Route One Corridor Study at this point to come from this board, that's all I want, but, but everyone else can report to you.
Right.
That's the way.
And that doesn't, and, and that doesn't preclude if something comes up at the town council meeting and they say, hey, this is an assignment we think should go to the ARB or to the EDC, it doesn't preclude them from reaching out to them and sending that to them. It's, they'll just come back up with us.
Yeah, but if, if I can interject, we had a very, very interesting situation happen the other night, and there was a lot of stuff getting done or whatever, and things collectively got passed everybody and everybody had to like backtrack and, and redo it or whatever, and I think it's very, very simple, that if somebody on the town council, the president or whatever, wants the ARB or the EDC or whoever to do something, please direct the planning board to ask whichever group it is to undertake this and get back to us in a month with a simple finding or a recommendation.
Exactly.
And that would be easy.
Yeah, I think, I think if they, if we're asking, if the plan, wait, if so, the council's asking them to do something and advisory, well, either you're asking us or you're advising us, hey, listen, we're having the EDC go look at this, we want to make you aware of it.
Right, exactly, but, yeah.
And for as much as there, there are those conversations that are pretty much in procedural order during the town council meeting, the other part of the challenge is operatively sidebar conversations should be held with you and say, would you please get ahold of Mr. Brockway or Paul or whoever else and ask him to do this?
Yes.
I would, I would, everybody's on the same page.
I would.
I don't think we have the authority to go directly to the town council without your permission.
No, and, and, and for the, no, and all I'm saying is for the, for the purposes of efficiency, if something comes up from the town council at a meeting and they want to reach out directly to, to the ARB, or they want to reach out directly to the EDC and simultaneously reach out to the planning board and say, hey, you know, EDC, we'd like you to undertake this, planning board, we're making you aware that this is an assignment we'd like the EDC to undertake, please manage it for us, great, we'll manage it for you, town council, you're directing a task to the EDC, you're letting us know to manage it and we'll manage it and we'll get back to you with it. I think that is, is fine, and then it comes back up through, through us, and I think that's an appropriate way to do it for expedience, because based on the meeting schedules, you know, why have it cycle through if it's something that you guys are meeting before we're meeting or vice versa? It only makes sense from an expedience standpoint that you know. Right, I'm just saying, it, it, right, but, uh, from that standpoint, I, I don't have a problem with simultaneously reaching out to, to both groups as long as it's, to your point, it's a notification. CCs to them, yeah, right, yeah. Right, that process goes in, exactly.
I'm sorry, what ends up happening and what has happened, okay, um, is instead of having a, a machine that's flowing well, okay, the things we went through, what they're creating is these silos that all end up reporting up the air, and it just ends up being confusion, because you watch sometimes at a town council, even town councils I went on, wait a minute, holy, why are we, why are we, this needs to go to the planning board, so it ends up mudding up the work, so my point being is this.
Yeah, the, I don't think. Town council is not immune to this problem.
Correct, I don't think there's a lot, I don't think.
Exactly what I'm talking about.
You're incredibly kind.
I don't think there's a deep under, there's a, any level of a deep understanding, and I wouldn't expect that out of someone that just gets appointed to the EDC, but I would expect that the EDC, members of the EDC and the leadership of it understand the relationship.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. Paul, you're on notice, no. Thanks, Paul. Oh, that's pretty good, oh, yes, we do, we have more things to do, sorry. Uh, next item on our agenda, if you are completed. Okay, next item is our administrative officer's report, and I see on the agenda it says none. Okay, uh, that leaves us to the assistance solicitor for planning and zonings report.
Nothing for me.
Uh, future agenda items or board questions? All right, uh, confirmation of quorum for our next meetings, we have two meetings on the agenda here, October twenty-first. Uh, it's our CIP intro zoning amendments, uh, it's a regular meeting, anybody who's not going to be here.
So deliverables for CIP.
Yes.
Capital improvement, it, we just want the schedule as to when we're going to go out and do the tour.
Yes.
So I'll talk to the manager and have that for our next meeting.
Yep.
That's my deliverable, all right.
All right, anybody not going to be here for October twenty-first? So we will have a quorum, because we will have five at least. Uh, November fourth meeting, we already talked about that earlier at the beginning of the meeting, we'll have at least four of us here. Uh, that'll be the joint public meeting and public hearing for the Route One Corridor Comprehensive Plan Amendments. And that is the last item on the agenda that I can do anything about, uh, other than.
Training?
Yes.
Oh, okay, um, that's mandatory, mandatory training.
I have a choice to sell me on traffic.
Okay, all right, can't do that day? Okay, wait, when is this?
That's February, Saturday on November fifteenth.
November fifteenth.
Saturday, yeah.
Okay, so you're not going to be.
I have to be sure I'm there, so if I'm on a Sunday and there are delays, I will not be in the boardroom, I'm going to go.
I'm signed up and I got my confirmation, you know.
You're already?
Yes.
That's you, overachiever.
I can't, I said it right away.
One last motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn in a second, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries five zero, meeting is adjourned at nine twenty-three PM, thank you very much.